Okay, we are gonna go live right now if we're ready.
We're ready.
Okay, great. We are live.
Welcome everyone to the Capitala City Council regular meeting. Um, we can begin with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Now moving on to Chloe, would you want to say a few words before we got started today?
Thank you Mayor Brooks. Welcome to the regular Capitala City Council meeting. In accordance with California Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or your landline or mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also live stream the meeting on our website. As always, the meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. And on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Our technician tonight is Walter. Thank you Walter, and thank you Mayor Brooks.
Thank you Chloe and thank you Walter. Let's now move on to item two, a report out on closed session. Ms. Butler, do you have a report out?
Good evening Mayor and council members. Uh, we held closed session on the item on the agenda and direction was given to staff. Direction was taken.
Thank you so much. Now moving on to item three, this is additional material. Chloe, did we have any additional material?
Yes, there were a few received for this agenda. One email regarding item 7C, that's the bike share item. Three emails for item 8A, the outdoor dining item. And six items regarding item 8G, that is the employee agreements item this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now gonna move on to item four. This is additions and deletions to the agenda. Jamie, do we have any additions and or deletions to the agenda?
I think there's no changes to the agenda, but I will note that we do have a special meeting tonight that will convene at the conclusion of this regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you. Now on to item four, this is oral communications. So this allows time for members of the public to address the city on any consent items on tonight's agenda or any topic within the jurisdiction of the city that is not on general government or public hearings. Do we have any public comments from our attendees?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees asking to speak on this item and I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay, well this may be your lucky night because I do not have my note in front of me on who to email or how to unmute. So, if you want, you can email publiccomments@capitola.ca. Larry? Okay. And if you'd like to make a comment via Zoom, you can do so at the bottom of the screen. Okay. We're now gonna move on to item six. This is staff or city council comments. We'll begin with staff.
I believe we have one comment this evening from our Public Works Director.
Good evening Mayor and Council. I just want to announce that next Wednesday, June 30th, at 6 o'clock in the evening, we will be hosting a webinar on the Claire Street Improvement Project that we have planned. Soliciting public comments. We have noticed a lot of residents in the area. We will have information on our website by tomorrow on how to log on to the meeting. So that's Wednesday, June 30th at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
So any other comments on staff? And we'll now move to city council. Any council comments of items not on the agenda? Councilmember Bertrand.
Uh, thank you Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Um, so I'm the city's representative to the senior council's Tripoli Advisory Board. And one thing that they're starting to address is the master plan for aging. Now I'll just give a brief description, um, because I'd like to have this considered as an agenda item uh, for, um, you know, just basically telling the public about it. So California for All Ages, what is the master plan for aging? So basically aging is changing in the state of California. And California's over 60 population is projected to diversify and grow faster than any other age group. So by 2030, 10.8 million Californians will be older and making up one quarter of the state's population. That's significant. So this master's plan, um, basically coming from the state of California, is addressing many of the relevant issues like housing, for instance, and, um, basic isolation issues that a lot of older people experience. So I kinda like to have this agendized for the next, um, or for one of the available next meetings. And another one is, um, there was a couple of emails about this. I've talked to people when I walk down by the Estenon. A lot of people would like to get the benches back. And I know a related issue is the parklets and that's what's taking up our benches. I think people understand that, but in general, uh, I think the idea is to find a different way to, um, provide barriers and bring back the benches because it's a Capitola thing to have the benches. Um, another thing I noticed, the library is wonderful. I think a lot of people really appreciate it. And, um, the fence around the children's area isn't installed yet. So I'd like to suggest that maybe the, um, the Art Commission, uh, think of that as an option to, to, um, spend some of the money that we have for art and use that as a venue for a fence. Not unlike the one on Capitola Avenue that's a rather beautiful addition to Capitola. Maybe we could do something similar that might tie in the library and the fact that there's a children's playground there. So that's just a suggestion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that our museum curator Frank Perry is gonna be retiring at the end of this month. Um, and I just want to acknowledge all the fantastic work that he's done in our museum. My first kind of involvement in the city of Capitola was through the museum as a volunteer and then later as a board member before I even ran for city council. And my experiences with Frank Perry have just been that he is an incredibly community-minded individual. He was a fantastic museum curator. Every volunteer orientation I've ever been to was very, uh, rich in his kinds of experience and knowledge and he will be, uh, he will be missed here in the city. So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge his, um, contribution to our city and the preservation of our city's history and thank him for his service. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments from council? Okay, there's just a couple that I have. On Sunday at 10:00 a.m., we're gonna be having the art walk. Um, that is, that the city has partnered with the Friends of the Public Park. Um, you will see five frames on, you can download a map and you will take the short walk through Capitola and visit five different frames that are painted by local artists. This Sunday, I'll be there and you'll get to see a couple of other councilmembers, I hope, show up as well to greet you at each frame. We'll begin at 10:00 a.m. and walk through. I can't imagine it'll take more than an hour, um, through the whole walk and you'll get to visit with artists and take some fun photos. I hope to see you there. In addition, I just wanted to let, um, everyone know that the, an update was released about having public meetings, um, or together and it looks like it's gonna sunset September 30th. So we're just working on that in terms of coming back into chambers and I'm working with staff on that. So I just wanted to give council an update, um, on that. Okay? Any other comments? Okay, see, and then we're gonna move on to item seven. This is consent. So all items listed on consent will be enacted in one motion in the form, uh, listed below. Before we move on to a motion, do we have any councilmembers who would like to pull an item for discussion at the end of today's meeting? Okay, see, and then if, if someone would like to entertain a motion, that's them.
I'll move here. Hold on a second.
Okay, I have a first from Vice Mayor Story and a second from Councilmember Bertrand. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Okay, item seven, consent passes unanimously. We're gonna now move on to item eight. This is general government and public hearings. We'll begin with item 8A. Any?
Evening Mayor, I'm gonna start this off.
In one second, I have, um, a comment from Councilmember Kaiser, please.
I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you. Um, I unfortunately have to recuse myself from the three items, 8A, 8B, and 8C because of my employment and possible financial benefit um, of working at Paradise Beach Grill in, right in the heart of the village. So, um, good luck and thanks guys.
Okay, so Councilmember Kaiser will be recusing herself and sucking away at this time. Okay, Mr. Justburg, this is item 8A, update on the proposed outdoor dining program.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So let me see if I can show my screen. If this is rolling. Come on, start up. There it goes. I hope you can all see my screen now and see the slides.
That looks great. Thank you.
So this is an update on the proposed outdoor dining program. Um, we've been working on it since direction in April from the council. It's been a team effort with myself, city manager, and the Community Development Director, input from other staff. Uh, quick background, like I said, in May 28th of 2020, at the beginning of the pandemic, uh, council authorized the creation of a temporary outdoor dining program. That program is continued. Um, it was originally supposed to daylight and, and in September 30th of last year. Obviously, as the pandemic continued, extensions were added. First extended to May 31st of this year. And currently, the end date is September 7th at the end of this summer. Um, just to, as a little background, further background, the city tried a two-year pilot program back in 2017 for parklets and no business has participated at that time. So we're kinda developing, we developed and had approved a work plan, um, with the city council. And it was to come up with a semi-permanent outdoor dining village, outdoor dining program in the village. Um, staff has completed gathering quite a bit of new information. We've conducted surveys, we've done cost and revenue projections. We've, uh, talked about design options. We haven't come up with them yet. We've talked about how we get there, permitting options, and the program approval process. We're gonna be reviewing those as we go through this. So starting with the input economics, um, these next, I think, six or seven slides are all inputs we have that we received and helped us put the program together. So the first input is economics. And the finance staff and city manager worked together and looked at the tax receipts in 12 village restaurants and determined that the average parklet would generate in gross sales about $130,000 per parking space. Now that's gross sales to the restaurant. Um, if we discount that by 30 or 50% because the parklets probably aren't as profitable as the indoor dining, we anticipate that the parklet would generate about $1,000, thousands of $1,300 worth of tax revenue per parking space. Based on the input from a local commercial, uh, real estate expert, um, restaurants tend to keep their rents around 7 to 8% of their gross receipts. So using that, uh, an annual suggests that the annual rents of the $4,500 to $6,400 per parking space would be supportable by the restaurants. In 2019, average parking meter revenue in the entire village was $3,400 per parking space. Obviously, spaces closer to the beach probably are above average and those compared, when compared to some of those farther from the beach. Looking at the program costs for developing a parklet program or putting in a individual parklet or, or outdoor dining facility. Um, we anticipate the permit fees I would be, you know, going through and, uh, having staff take in an application, process that application and approve it would be about $4,000. Construction costs are anywhere, we changed, I changed the last number from 15 to $30,000. I think previously we've been stating 20, but I think the costs are going up. And the annual rent could be $3,400 per parking space. That would equate to what our parking meter revenue is, which also equates to about $18 per square foot. So the hardest cost for the city to offset if we wanted to help move this program forward is the construction cost. This is because if we were involved in building it, we have public contract code requirements such as prevailing wage and bidding projects out. So, um, I think it'd be most difficult for us to participate in the construction cost. And we think that having the, uh, program participants paying and reimbursing us the lost meter revenue makes the program sustainable. It keeps the city whole, it keeps the services that we, um, provide with the meter revenue whole, so we don't have any cuts. To give you an idea, the 2017 program had similar costs. They had a fee, permitting fee of $4,500. They did have a $1,000 deposit they were, that was proposed. That was because they had to remove the decking at that time, um, after two years. And so they had a deposit to make sure they removed that decking. And the annual rent at that time was 3,220 based on the meter revenue at that time. So now I'm gonna hand it over to, to Development Director Hurley to go through the next few slides.
Okay, thank you Director Justburg. Uh, good evening Mayor Brooks and Council. Um, so the other inputs for other programs, we looked at what the other jurisdictions are doing, um, in the region. And looking at Capitola, city of Santa Cruz, Scott Valley, Watsonville, the county, and Los Gatos and Carmel, um, all of which have COVID, the temporary COVID-19 outdoor dining programs in place, which are all scheduled to expire by the end of this year. Um, of those communities, three of them have long-term programs. Santa Cruz, city of Santa Cruz, Watsonville, and Los Gatos. And I will say that we're included in that, that we have a long-term program outside of our village in our new zoning code, but we prohibited the outdoor dining in our, inside the village. Um, and then also, um, the city of Santa Cruz is currently working on and Los Gatos has in place a new prototype design option, which will save the upfront costs and speed up permitting for, um, restaurants in their city. Next slide, please. Um, so I also reached out to the Coastal Commission to get their, their input on this. And as I stated, outside of, um, the zoning code prohibits outdoor dining and the public will be right of way within the village. So if we were to move forward with such a program, um, for the long term, it would require a modification to our LCP, our zoning code. Um, in speaking with the Coastal Commission staff, they raised concerns with conversion of the public parking spaces to private uses. Um, and they referenced the Coastal Act and the impact on public access in recreation. They also made suggestions on how we could mitigate this loss of public space. And those included reducing the overall number of lost parking spaces. So right now, I think we're at 50. Um, they also talked about the use of revenue generated by renting spaces to improve public access elsewhere and limiting hours of the private access and reverting to public access at other times. So when the restaurants, having, having limited hours, the restaurants then allowing the public to use. to use it on off-hours. Next slide, please. Another consideration we looked at is design. So outside the village, we have an administrative process for outdoor dining, and there's minimal design criteria that is looked at. It has to have a connection to the architecture and be compatible with the site. But if we were to bring this into the village, where it's a high-traffic area by tourists and our residents, we think there should be, we'd recommend oversight of the design. And two approaches to this is, one is the pre-approved prototype design, so the city could participate in approving a pre-approved prototype that's designed by an architect and allow administrative approval of those prototypes to restaurants that choose to utilize that design. And the other option is for, to require planning commission approval for a custom design, so any restaurant that wants to come with a custom design, it would go to planning commission for approval. And in talking with the City of Santa Cruz, they just put out an RFP to get, see what type of interest there was in creating two prototype designs for the city. In the response they got, I think they got very limited responses, and the estimate was eighty thousand dollars for two designs. We think that's high, and if, so tonight we'll be seeking direction from the city council of whether or not you would like to participate in a prototype design. We could possibly piggyback onto the City of Santa Cruz efforts for some money savings and possibly use up to ten thousand dollars of, there's money in the city manager unanticipated events fund that could be allocated towards this effort. Next slide. So what would the process look like for adopting, for amending our code? Now, you all know this very well, having just gone through the process. There's, the first step is optional. We could draft the ordinance and bring it back to city council first to get your initial input. Typically, when we do a zoning code update, we take it to planning commission first for recommendation, and then it comes to city council. So we could take the optional first step, but it would definitely have to go to the planning commission for review and recommendation, and we could schedule this for August, and then the city council for first and second readings, which would happen in August and September. And then we would submit this to the coastal commission. So once we submit it to the coastal commission, they do a ten-day completeness review and then sixty days to schedule on a meeting. So at that point, we're thinking most likely coastal commission meeting would happen in mid-December, and then, of course, any changes the coastal commission makes, we come back to city council for direction and possible adoption. So that first step of draft ordinance is optional and could save us about a month if we were to take out that first piece of coming to council first. Next slide. Also, we looked at the California Environmental Quality Act, the CEQA, and in looking at the CEQA review for a project, any project that is subject to, CEQA is required for any project, is subject to discretionary approval or has the potential to physically change the environment, and if it's undertaken by a public agency or through the entitlement process from a public agency. So the outdoor dining program most likely would be categorically exempt under CEQA. If we were to go through the pre-approved prototype design, we would have to look at the overall program and consider impacts to the environment, but I do think that we would likely be able to put a categorical exemption with CEQA. And then if we were to review individual design permits by planning commission, each application would be subject to CEQA, and that also would likely qualify for a categorical exemption as an accessory structure. Next slide. And I'll give it back to Director Jessberg. Thank you.
So one of the other inputs we looked into was the impact on special events that occur in the village. The car show, which happens, you know, in early June, they did express concerns that the loss of prime parking spaces mainly along the Esplanade may impact long-term viability of the event. I think their concern is, you know, they pack it in every corner, and if they reduce the number of cars that they can show, they're not sure about the viability of that. The Wharf to Wharf didn't, just they'll be able to adapt to whatever on-street dining occurs. If the flow of people is kind of like water, they'll find their way through there, so they weren't concerned. The Art and Wine Festival, the event organizers said they should be able to adapt for the loss, any loss of space. It may change some of the dynamics of it, but they did not express great concerns about the program moving forward. And the Beach Festival also has no impact. They don't have a great footprint of using those spaces during the event anyway. Another input that we reserved is we did send a survey or questionnaire out to all the restaurants participating, currently participating in the program in the village. Fourteen of the seventeen responded, and nine wanted to continue providing outdoor dining. There was four maybes, depending on costs and the permitting requirements, and two expressed support for removing it along the Esplanade. Regarding the fees, there's a mixability to pay, I think it's based on the size of the restaurant, the larger the restaurant, be more willing to pay any of the fees, have the ability to do that. City fees and the city rent were obviously less favorable and more of a concern for them to pay than the construction cost. And then we asked them if they would like a lease term of three to seven years, if that mattered. They were all pretty close, obviously the longer term received a little bit more favorable returns than the three-year, but I can't say it was a significant difference. Then we also did a public survey, and these next few slides, I'm going to kind of hit some of the highlights I just picked out from them. This went out on Survey Monkey and was out for about two weeks, and we got a hundred and ninety-six responses. The first slide shows the type of, who responded. So I'll run through the categories. This is village resident, so somebody who lived in the village. This is a Capitola resident but not in the village. Here we had a village business owner, and then a Capitola business owner but not in the village, a village property owner, Capitola property owner but not in the village, the visitor from Santa Cruz County, and the visitor from out of Santa Cruz County, and then the other. So they are only able to pick one category, so there should be nobody that got double counted, sorry. As you can see, eighty-three percent of the respondents lived in the village, or the majority of forty-three percent, sorry, living Capitola, and ten percent are residents within the village. So that just kind of gives us an idea of who responded to the survey. The first question we asked them is, in general, do you support the installation of semi-permanent outdoor dining in decks and streets of the village? Here's the eighty-three percent, eighty-three percent of all the hundred and ninety-six respondents supported that idea. I then kind of dove a little deeper and said, well, what about the village residents, the village property owners? So we had twenty-nine respondents who either own a business, live in the village, or have a business in the village, and so from there, it didn't go down a whole lot. We had seventy-two percent of them continue to support the idea of an outdoor dining program in the village. And we looked at specific streets. We asked them, do you support outdoor dining on the following streets? All the streets received well over fifty percent. Esplanade received the most, San Jose was next, Monterey Avenue and Capitola Avenue are about equal, but they were all over and received significant support. And I think the final question I have for us is what kind of design they would appear? We asked them if they would like a uniform design, where they all meet, where they all matched, or they like a design selected from a set of options or prototypes? Would they like to see original and unique designs, or would they like to have a design that matched the restaurant building? And if you take these two, which are kind of the same in that they're pre-selected, prefabricated, or prototype designs that are approved by the city, those receive fifty-five percent in total between those two items. The unique design receives twenty-four percent, and the maxi exterior receives twenty. So I think this shows a support for developing prototypes and having them all kind of match. We did have public safety, the police department, and myself, we kind of looked at what's going on out there now and the impacts to public safety. The police department just has been treating and will continue to treat the outdoor dining areas of extensions of the business, any crime and safety matters, so that, you know, any alcohol problems or other kind of noise problems, as the outdoor dining is considered part of that restaurant that's associated with it. The current dining program has not led to an increase in the demand from service from the police department. And although the traffic on the Esplanade is congested, it's always been congested, probably always will be congested, we really didn't see many changes in the congestion. You know, we're not backing up and significantly impacting Stockton Avenue, people wait to get into the Esplanade. We have that, and when it does occur, it happened before, happened with the parklets, and the PD does take steps to close off the Esplanade when that occurs, but it does not have to occur more often with the parklets in place. So what we've been going through in part of this presentation and asking for decision points from the council tonight, we have a lot of slides for each one, but I just want to cover each one of the ones that we're going to ask you for input tonight. First is which streets will be allowed in the program, streets and areas, because there are some sidewalks and other public areas that are part of this. Should we put limits on the program? This mainly in response to the coastal commission. Should we limit the total number of parking spaces with the total number of businesses that are able to participate? What design standards should we do, and in the review, should be followed? Do you support the idea of having staff issuing administrative permits for a prototype parklet or outdoor eating area? The fees charged by the city, do you support the fees being charged? And what term lease would you recommend? So looking at the decision points one by one, outdoor dining currently occurs on the Esplanade, Monterey Avenue, Capitola Avenue, Longway, the Wharf, and two, or one or two areas on Monterey Avenue sidewalk. And, you know, as we go through this, staff would recommend that we allow them on all the streets and areas except for Longway. I think there's an option to take the current establishment on Longway and move it onto the sidewalk in front of the building, very wide sidewalk there, and that would be less impactful on the residents along Longway and people who use Longway. Regarding the number of permits, you know, we hear the coastal commission, I think if we come back and say, well, we want to keep exactly what we have, we're going to have a tough time getting approval through them. So we're recommending limit the number of spaces to twenty-five spaces, which is approximately fifty percent of existing dining. And at a minimum, we let businesses use spaces fronting their business. You know, if there's some businesses that, or spaces that split a business, we probably want them to have concurrence with their neighbor before being able to use that space. Looking at the fees, again, these are the fees that we're looking at, and should we include these? I think we're recommending that the city waive any permit fees to try and help this program forward. We provide no construction assistance, and we continue to charge the parking meter revenue per space, which is thirty-four hundred dollars, eighteen dollars a square foot, with annual increase adjustment, CPI adjustments. From a design standard, you know, the options are to allocate up to ten thousand dollars of the city manager's unanticipated funds for the development of a parklet program, and unique, unique or different designs that don't use the prototype would continue to go to the planning commission. We recommend that, yes, they go to the planning commission, then we do the allocation and develop a prototype, so we have both options for restaurants moving forward. Regarding the lease term, there was mixed, you know, not mixed results, obviously the longer the lease term, the more favorable it is. We pulled three to seven years. At this point, staff, I think it's comfortable recommending a four-year lease program for this, at this time. So this is kind of just the matrix of the decision points. I can bring that up if you want during your deliberations. It's just everything I covered, but I did include the two thousand and seventeen program, what we had here, and I just want to run through those very quickly. So the streets, we're reckoning quite a few streets. Last time, it was only available on San Jose Avenue between Capitola Ave and the Esplanade. Overall cap, we're recommending twenty-five spaces. In two thousand and eighteen, it was four spaces, two per business, and it was on a first-and-first serve basis. What works, since we're at twenty-five spaces and we're currently using fifty, would staff will develop a method for allocating spaces to the interests of businesses? We're thinking of a lottery, other methods of helping determine how to allocate spaces if they have more interest than we have spaces available. The sign, I think this is, we forgot to update this side, I apologize. This is to allocate ten thousand dollars from the city manager's fund, unanticipated events, to develop a Capitola prototype, and have the peace planning commission approve the unique design. All designs before had to go to the planning commission. And before regarding fees, no fees were waived in two thousand and seventeen, there was no construction assistance, and it was thirty-two hundred dollars per year. So we're recommending waiving some fees and thirty-four hundred dollars a year. So there's a four-year lease we're recommending versus a two-year program. And as a two-year program, so once the clock started, they had to get all the approvals and then build it, and then take it out after the beginning of the program. So in reality, it was less than the two-year program, they could have their deckings in place. So with that, our recommendations are to receive this report and provide the key input, as I've outlined, and determine if a draft ordinance, if you want to see the draft ordinance before it is reviewed by the planning commission. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jessberg. We are going to move to questions for council. Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I have a question about how the designs would get pre-approved so as to avoid CEQA. Is there a process anticipated, and would that process involve the Arc and Site Commission or Committee?
So the process is not quite defined, but we've put out most likely an RFP for, to solicit a designer to come in and create a prototype for the city. And when a project that is subject to CEQA, if it's an administrative process for the permit, it would not be subject to CEQA at that time when a restaurant comes in. But overall, in creating the prototypes and putting that program together, we would be subject to CEQA, looking at the program when we're drafting it for the code for prototype. And at that point, we would have to see if there are any environmental impacts. And I don't think there would be in, you know, CEQA, there's going to be a big change regarding vehicle, looking at VNT, vehicle miles traveled, rather than looking at impacts to traffic. I think under the old CEQA ways of looking at levels of service, there, we may have run into a CEQA issue of whether or not removing parking would increase the level of service for traffic through the village, but that's no longer a review criteria within CEQA. We look at vehicle miles traveled, and so I'm not anticipating any environmental impacts from the prototype design. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, so naturally, you always think of other questions when that answer comes about. So would the prototype designs be sort of general, and then if a merchant came up with a design that was sort of based on that general design, would that fit into the whole thing of avoiding CEQA? Would that be a way to approach it? In other words, not exactly as the prototype designs, but something that is based off of that, so you get individuality?
I think the idea behind the prototype is to have a standard design. We have seen, you know, the City of Los Gatos, the program they have in place, they've modified, they have four designs and with just a little bit of difference in their designs for each type. So there's a possibility that if we were to invest in this, maybe we come up with two different types of railing designs. But the idea is that there's certainty when an applicant comes in of what they will build, and that they wouldn't have to go through an additional process of going to planning commission. So my, my recommendation with the prototypes would be to create standards um, so that, you know, the council's expectations are met when these designs are built. And if they want flexibility, they could go to planning commission for flexibility of a custom design.
Okay, because, you know, I think flexibility or customization, um, offers something of interest to the public and it also offers something to the merchants so that their store stands out in a way that they feel is representative of their store.
Yeah.
You know, it seemed, you know, like Margaritaville, maybe a Mexican sort of, and certainly, uh, Bravo. Well, they want tables on the, on the sidewalk, so that's different. But Margaritaville, I can see them wanting to do something different than the Thai place, for instance.
Yeah, and that, that's why we're suggesting tonight that, um, have both options, the prototypes and custom designs could be reviewed by planning commission if, if a restaurant wanted a custom design.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you. Um, my first question is concerning the, the average approximate size of a parklet. If, um, in the staff report, that was 180 square feet. Uh, how many parking spaces does that encompass?
So that 180 square feet is, is the size of a parking spot. It's not the size of a given parklet. Um, I don't know, we just stated something in there, but yeah, a typical parking spot is nine feet by 20 feet or 180 square feet.
Okay, so that, that's the size of, of one parking space.
Correct.
The, um, the actual parklet could maybe be, or double, three times that.
Yeah, I think currently there's some that are four, some that are five, some that are, I think five is the biggest one we have right now.
Is that, with that clarification, Steve, does the average, uh, um, revenue generation of 130,000 buys, does that still hold for parking space?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on the, um, the prototypes, um, and I, I, initially I thought that we were going to do something collaborative with the City of Santa Cruz. Um, and, um, uh, but what Director Hurley just mentioned, that we would, we could go direct with our own RFP for prototype designs. Um, and so I was, I was a little confused about those two approaches. Uh, but however, if we did collaborate with the City of Santa Cruz, would they be able to accommodate, um, our particular specifications and our maybe unique needs, um, on the Esplanade?
So we have started, um, discussing this idea with the City of Santa Cruz. Um, they are very open to us participating and, um, taking in our feedback on prototype designs and we have talked about maybe, um, the possibility of one that's Capitola-centric. But at this point, um, because of, they've, they've just gotten, um, the responses to their RFP, there's a lot to work out with if, if they were to contract with an architect, what would exactly be, um, agreed to in their, um, contract? So there's, I, I wish I had a more, more definite answers for you, but if, if we're asked to consider a prototype, we'll do more research and see if there's a cost savings and possibly, uh, more prototypes in that collaboration or if we should, um, go out on our own. So there's, I don't have a concrete answer for you on that one.
Yeah, I, I understand. It's so early and, uh, and I think everybody's maybe trying to, uh, lay out their design. However, whatever approach we used, um, and we did, uh, end up with the prototypes, is part of your plan to have the prototypes go to the planning commission?
Yes, so we would take the prototypes to the planning commission, um, to, for, uh, their approval of the prototype design. And should the city council want it to also come to you for review, we could make that happen as well.
Okay, good. Yeah, thank you. Um, and I think my final question, and this is going to the finances or the cost to the businesses. Didn't we recently approve a federal grant, um, that's, um, available to the businesses? Um, and could they use that for their parklet expenses, including permit fees?
So I can respond to that as well. Um, we did, um, within our CD, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, the CDVG coronavirus rounds two and three, we, we have allocated that money towards grants for businesses for up to $7,500. That's for rental assistance. They'll have to show that they've paid rent since, um, and then they would be, um, they would show us receipts of paid rent and then we would give them that money and they could then take the $7,500 and invest it into their dining decks or their permits, should they choose to use that money in that way. But they would have flexibility on how to spend the money after showing that they've, they've already paid the rent during the pandemic.
Okay, um, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. Uh, there was a mention of only allowing these kind of outdoor dining parklets um, in spaces that were directly in front or in the frontage of a business. And I can only think of one that comes to mind, but I know there's at least one, uh, business where directly in front of them is a private lot and so they currently have their parklet kind of on the side of their business. Um, so would that not be allowed in this case? Is it, is it literally only in front of the business or is it any surrounding property that touches the business?
I'm trying to think what you were talking, but, um,
Talking about the, uh, the sausage, sausage works.
So there is, is not in a parking, well, partially in a parking space and partially, uh, it's all on road right away. Um, I believe unless it's moved since I last saw it. So that would, that would count towards this program. Um, if they have a, about half a space and then some other space that's adjacent to that space, it's not a parking zone. But it is on the street and it is part of the program, inconsiderate.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to confirm that when we're talking about the frontage, uh, from the business, that it doesn't literally mean directly.
Right, the street frontage is, I think, what we mean by that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions and then I'll circle back to other council members if you have any last questions before we move on to public comment. Um, so this might be too futuristic, you know, once we move forward, but I'm just thinking about the building of the, the parklets themselves. And is there anything built into our zoning code, like how long it takes? So we know how expensive it could possibly, like Mr. Justburg showed, it could cost anywhere between $10,000 and $30,000. Let's say halfway through, they just couldn't finish it or it's not happening fast enough or being built fast enough. Do we have any protocols or procedures around that?
We have procedures in terms of a building permit and how, um, how you have to move along with your building permit. It is something, if it were a concern to the council, that we could possibly add, add conditions tied to, um, I could look into it with the city attorney and make sure we're not breaking any laws, but, um, but possibly we could have conditions with their, uh, in, in their of construction times. I've never seen that done before, but I, we could.
And, and just to give you kind of where my train of thought is going, where we, some of them already exist and, and the status of the way they look now, what we ultimately want to see is them evolve and get better, right? And so I'm just curious about that timeframe of allowing for that process to take place and hoping that it doesn't take too long. Um, so that's kind of where my train of thought is for that, for that particular item. Um, and then you mentioned methods to come back. You're still thinking about that in terms of whether we run out of spots? And I just wanted to make sure that, that, is that, does that come back to council on what that process would look like? And, um, I think, Steve, you said there was only 25 and we have 50 right now. And I'm just thinking like maybe somebody didn't respond in that survey and then look around and they're like, wow, I really want that too, so, um.
Absolutely, we would develop a program that would go through all the steps the businesses need to participate. And we would include in there, um, our ideas and get your council approval on how we would do an allocation, should we need to do that.
Okay.
So the whole program will go back to the council for approval.
And then just to piggyback off of what Vice Mayor Story was saying, that right now we have this kind of idea in terms of how much that we're going to lose in revenue based off of those assumptions. Did you build in any wiggle room for that if it were to grow or is that just, are we pretty?
Well, right now our assumptions are on a per parking spot base, basis. So as it grows, um, as long as we're getting reimbursed for our per parking spot that we're losing, I think we're whole. I don't know if the city manager wanted to add anything to that.
The only thing I would add is that we would be, um, if we were to talk about a different parking meter rate, o- obviously that wouldn't, um, we would then be losing on those spaces if they'd already been leased for four years. So, for example, if we change the parking meter rate between now and when the, when the parklets are installed, uh, we would be committing to the $3,400 if that's the rate the council selects in our program. I don't know if that gets after your question as well.
Yeah, um, okay, and then regarding Longway, and so this, if we don't move forward with Longway, that particular restauranteur would be significantly impacted. And it doesn't seem like we're building in a process for the kind of that street dining or whatever, sidewalk dining. Do we need to talk about that today and, and a process or do you already have something in mind? Because that doesn't follow into any of the prototypes. So I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're thinking about that as well.
So we did include as an approved area, the sidewalks on Monterey Avenue, and that was in for El Toro Bravo and Casanova's Deli, where they do have outdoor dining already. Uh, we don't mention the per name in the, in the reports, but that was our consideration. And then, um, I know Katie has talked with them and maybe you can share that information with them.
Sure, so I, um, spoke with one of the owners of El Toro Bravo. She may be, um, they may speak during the public hearing this evening, but, um, at that time, they, I think because the restaurant has reopened up and they have plenty of seating inside, that they would be interested in having a couple of tables along their frontage in front of the sidewalk. And it's, actually the sidewalk there is rather, uh, wide and could accommodate plenty of space for people walking by. Um, and it seemed like that was a good resolution for them. And they understood that, um, you know, moving out of Longway due to the impacts to the neighbors, which they've been working really closely with throughout the pandemic.
Okay, and not to belabor, I just, just for clarification, because those are not parking spots though, that doesn't fall into the similar rates that we're proposing. So how does that apply to, to this, uh, this different case?
Our thinking was that we would utilize the $18 a square foot, taking the $3,400 divided by 180, $18 a square foot per year, and then figuring out what would be the most appropriate sort of rent for the sidewalk dining situation.
Thank you. Okay, those are all of my questions. Um, Councilmember Bertrand, your hand is still raised. Do you have any further questions before we move to public comments?
Yeah, you sort of led into it, uh, Mayor. So I was just thinking that we should probably have another program that does talk about tables on the sidewalk. Um, the rent maybe is, um, the vice, um, city manager suggestion could be the, the way to approach it. But, you know, make it known to the merchants that they could do, uh, sidewalk tables. And, um, you know, a lot of cities do that in San Francisco where I'm from, you know, it's a big major thing. And, uh, for instance, um, around Columbus and Broadway and stuff like that, you know, it's big tradition in San Francisco to have on rather narrow sidewalks, actually, little tables where people eat their breakfast or read their newspaper, where they have a little cappuccino or something like that. So I think it could fit in. It's sort of an urban interface between people and, um, on the sidewalk and people enjoying something on a little table. It's quite, quite, quite quaint, but had a different approach to it, basically.
Okay, so we're going to move to public comment now. Um, I found my script, lucky you. Now we'll move, we'll open public comment for this item. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomments@ci.capitola.ca.us or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you. You will have three, up to three minutes to speak. Okay, so let's move to attendees.
Yes, Mayor Brooks, we have Linda Smith. Here we go.
Good evening, council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak on this subject. Um, as I've spoken before, I'm a big fan of the, um, outdoor dining in the village and making this permanent pass, you know, this COVID time, I think is a very, very, um, progressive and wise move. I have had the benefit of, um, seeing a lot of installed parklets in San Francisco and in Paso Robles. And, um, I have some comments relative to the design of some feedback on what I've seen that works and what I've seen that kind of doesn't work, so that as you move forward. And two comments that were made by, um, council members, um, the mayor's comment about evolution, evolving from what they have now into what your prototype develops. I think that is, is very wise. And, um, so variety brings character to the area and it speaks to the restaurants. Um, I've seen some installations in different areas, especially up in San Francisco, where, um, there were several blocks that had kind of a cookie cutter approach and it was sort of stiff and, um, not inviting. So, um, I would, I would encourage your prototypes to be sort of loosely defined so that there can be a lot of character and still meet the, the spirit of the prototype. Um, simple and casual. If you're going to have to make them removable, um, remember that the businesses are going to have to store um, whatever they're using in those areas. When they first started, they were taking tables and chairs from the inside and using them outside because they couldn't use them inside. But once we establish this as a long-term thing, if you're going to pull it out, um, for events or, um, for seasonal stuff, it's going to be a storage nightmare for them. So I would just encourage you to, to keep that in mind. Um, building platforms that the parklets sit on top of may seem like a really good idea, but where I've seen them implemented, the, the, um, platform is difficult to maintain. Um, most of them have been out of some kind of wood and they're, um, they're costly to build. And the parklets that have platforms tend to be much more enclosed than the parklets that are, are sitting on the street. Um, and the ones that sit on the street are open and airy and much more inviting. Um, don't need to say this, but I'm going to anyway, Plexycat, Plexiglas is the kiss of death. You can't unscratch it and I don't, I didn't see any implementations where they weren't scratched from one way or another. Um, wheelchair access is mandatory. I have taken a friend of mine in a wheelchair to a parklet that did not have any wheelchair access on the curb. And it wasn't in Capitola and I think we've done a good job of making sure that there are ramps where the curbs are high, but that should definitely be in, um, what we talk about.
And Miss Jess, that was time, but if you want to just wrap up your, your thoughts.
Okay, what I was just going to say is that the restaurants in Capitola Village have always struggled. Um, it's always been a hard thing for them and having options to establish a permanent parklet may make the difference between surviving and not surviving for some of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Larry, anyone else in the audience? Are we still irritating audience because?
Mayor Brooks, uh, Karen Hanna.
Okay, Ms. Hanna. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, just briefly.
Okay, great. Just briefly, Linda touched on something that I get feedback from customers. I basically do support the parklet idea. But I think that crucial to the long-term success is the city supervising and insisting on proper maintenance of the parklets. In the beginning, the BIA was very involved in them. And then we would get calls saying, you know, you need to go talk to this person about this or that. And, you know, clearly, that's, that's not the role of the BIA. I think maintenance is just really crucial to this not looking a mess. And it has the potential, like right now, most of the parklets aren't being used every day. And they're not being maintained very well, in my opinion. And that's the other issue is abandonment. If a restaurant, I mean, they have to pay a lot of money. So I think they're really going to commit. So I'm really hopeful about that. But if they don't, if there's one that's not being used, the city should have some means of making it, making the restaurant take away a parklet that's basically been abandoned. So maintenance is just very, very high on everybody. All the comments I get from visitors is, wow, they're starting to look a little shabby. What's going on? And I know that they haven't been able to put as much money into it now because they didn't know whether they were going to have them going forward. So hopefully, it wouldn't be an issue. And some of the people are doing a very good job. And I think it's a real asset. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from our attendees?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any additional hands raised on this item, and I do not see any emails.
Okay. And so just a reminder to speak, you can raise your hand by clicking on reactions down below in your Zoom application, and you will be called on. We'll just give it one more minute. And after this, we'll move back to council for further discussion and direction.
I do not see any other hands raised on this item, Mayor Brooks.
Okay. And did you want to refresh your screen just to see if anyone has emailed?
Yes, I will do that. I do not see any other emails on this item.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chloe, for putting the timer up. Okay. We will bring this back to council for further comment and deliberation and direction to staff for next steps. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I just have some general comments. I am in agreement with the idea of limiting the number of spaces in order to appease the concerns of the coastal commission. I'm also interested in our, working with the city of Santa Cruz for a prototype design and taking the money from the city manager's unexpected events budget to do that. I'm also interested in considering the possibility of limiting the private hours and reverting it to public after a certain, you know, time. I'm not sure if we would need to post that somewhere, if it would just be kind of word of mouth knowledge that after a certain time it becomes public. But overall, I think we should continue our outdoor dining program and move forward with these kinds of limitations in order to ensure that it's possible for our businesses.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah. Linda Smith talked a little bit about the idea of uniqueness. As, you know, I brought that up too. So I, I would like the, you know, I think it's a great idea to have staff, planning actually, come up with prototypes. But I, I would like the sense of the prototype to be something that establishes something that you could work off of. And each business would be able to take that and, you know, sort of mold it to what they feel represents their business is unique or potentially unique in that business, represents a style or somehow, you know, it's true, I believe, that cookie cutter, you know, is not going to make it. And also, the pride of their particular parklot because the business has a chance to make it for what they would like, I think, is really beneficial. It'd make the, the whole concept more interesting to visitors, maybe eclectic in some sense. So that's my first comment. The other comment is, I helped a friend of mine and two other guys build a parklet in Fairfax. It only took us two days. It included a platform that was ADA accessible, included a wall around it, included posts that supported lights, and also other colorful features. It didn't cost us more than $1,000. So I don't know where the costs come from. I suppose if you hire someone to do it, you know, that's where the cost comes from. So I think there's a lot of possibilities in terms of how you attack building something. And so those are my two comments. I, I thought that initially when Steve brought up the, the presentation, we were going to go down a list of things so we could go step by step in terms of making decisions where the parklets would be and other items on that list. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Steve, do you want to put up the last slide for us to kind of see what staff's recommendation was tonight?
Sure.
Thank you. And while he pulls that up, so again, we're looking at the recommendation on the left side, yeah.
Did you show it?
Yeah, that's great.
So, yeah, the streets, overall cap to design fees and the lease term are the items we're looking for input tonight.
Great. Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll go through the list and give my feedback on the particular topic as requested. You know, in, in terms of the streets, I, I think it should include most of the villages. I can think of restaurants that are in, you know, on Temple Avenue, on Monterey, of course, the Espinon, on San Jose. So I also agree that we should avoid Long Way as staff recommended. In terms of the overall cap, I'm not currently prepared to put a, just a set limit or an arbitrary limit trying to, you know, appease the coastal commission. I would rather see what businesses are seriously interested. And we have eight currently. And, you know, if, and it appears that they're using two to three parking spaces each at the minimum. And so we're already up to 32. And so, and if they use four, you know, yeah, we could be up to 36 and higher. So I would like to focus on what businesses want it, what businesses will need it, and to work from that perspective. On the design, I think that the prototype design, I think is helpful in terms of certain basic standards. And I want to particularly safety standards. I know that we could think that, you know, any of us could probably build a parklet. But I think that we need to think in terms of public safety in the worst-case scenarios. These are in close proximity to vehicles. I think there needs to be some thought about engineering the barriers to withstand some level of vehicular collision. And I think that that takes some engineering professionals to be able to do that, you know. And so if we could work with Santa Cruz and we're able to kind of lay out our own specifications through that collaborative process, I would support doing that. But I don't want to get, have Capital get lost in what Santa Cruz's needs and design may be. So, yeah, if we can't, then we should probably go out on our own. Concerning the fees, I'm willing to, for the prototype designs, have the city waive the permanent fees and just have it approved by the staff, on the condition that the prototypes are reviewed and approved by the planning commission and maybe potentially the council. But I'm confident that planning commission can do a good job there. I also support Linda Smith's comment about, you know, too much uniformity is not good. And also, too much variety is not good. We need to have a good balance. Hopefully, we can have some basic standards, but that each business can put their own unique branding onto their parklet. And the lease term, you know, just because this is something completely new for us, I would prefer to go with the shorter three-year term with options to renew by both sides. And then maybe we could extend it for longer periods. But I think for now, I would be comfortable for an initial three-year term. I believe I covered the topics they asked us to weigh in on. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, comments? Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, the thing I'd like to add is, I can't imagine that there would be much use for parklets during the winter unless there was canopies. And so maybe addressing the issue of, you know, disassembling and having a place to store things. Because I think as Linda Smith brought up, that this could be an issue for some of the merchants. So my question of staff is, up at the Corporation Yard, is there space that we could use to help in this regard, storing some of the stuff? Because I can't imagine that the merchants would have a lot of room, certainly not in their businesses, to store things. Or could we provide aid to move things for them so that storage would be a little bit easier accomplished? And I'd also like to ask about, have we considered the barrier issue? I think Sam's point is a good one. If we return the benches to the Espinon, which I think is really critical for visitors, we have to come up with a different way to protect the people that would be sitting in the parklet. So that's a question of staff. So I think, go ahead, Jamie.
Go ahead, Stephen. You want to talk about, I was just going to say, the parklets are not intended to come out. Go right ahead.
Yeah, exactly. I think the way the parklets are being built now, you're seeing that the most recent design is they're actually pouring a concrete pad. So they're not maintaining a wooden deck. And certainly, those would not come out. We do not have room at the yard. We're overflowing at the yard and trying to store five or six wooden decks would be virtually impossible, I believe. But I really don't think they're designed to come out. If they are wooden, moving a structure of that size would most likely result in damage. And it's not something I think the city would want to be undertaking from a liability standpoint to move somebody else's private property. And then I forget the second question. I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, I hadn't considered that these would be cement pads. Goes beyond what I was thinking. But maybe that's what people want. So then, it's the whole thing about the winter. So, you know, right now, there's a bunch of merchants that don't use their parklets. It really looks begrat, it just does not look very attractive to have these abandoned parklets and, you know, being used as storage areas that aren't maintained and dead plants and stuff like that. It just doesn't speak as something that I would like to see as a program that we support. So if we're going to come up with a plan, my question of staff is, can the plan include a way so they can use it during the wintertime since we're not going to move this cement structure? If it's wood, it could be moved. But if it's cement, I agree, you can't, you can't move it.
I think it's up to the restaurants who are going to design these. I mean, the prototypes that I've seen do include the ability to put umbrellas or other roof structures on them. And certainly, we can include that. But if we're giving the restaurants some individuality here, it's up to them to come up with designs and figure out how to best. We saw it this past winter. Some of them brought in umbrellas and heaters and were able to utilize them except for in rain. But on the colder days, they were able to use their spaces. It's really up to the restaurants to help figure that out and make a dedication to maintaining it. I think we want to avoid something where the city's having to go out and maintain these or do enforcement, continual enforcement. I think that's one of our concerns is what we see now is they're not being used. And that's maybe a question we want to talk, talk to you about tonight, is do we want to start if they're not using them, moving the benches back off, out of the street and back along the seawall? That's something we could undertake if they're not utilizing their spaces now. But I think it's, it's really up to the restaurants. And if they're financially involved, hopefully, they'll have a better dedication to maintaining their spaces.
Yeah, I agree with that. If they're financially involved, that will have more dedication. I think that was a point brought up by Public. I'm still having a problem with the winter. Part of the reason why the winter did work with us is because you couldn't go indoors. But, you know, if the public has a chance to go indoors as opposed to sitting outside with a rainy or cold climate, you know, I think I'd still go indoors. I think we're going to have a problem with the winter if we, if we have the option to go indoors.
Okay. So, Councilmember Peterson, I see your hand raised, but I just want to make some comments on the summary here, and then we'll circle back to you. So in regarding, in regards to the summary here, so I'm in agreement with the streets on, to approve outdoor dining, all of those streets minus Long Way. Regarding the limit on number of spaces, I agree with Councilmember Story. There's really no reason to limit the spaces at this point. And I think ultimately, it would be nice to see what the coastal commission suggests. And then we can make that decision at a later time, again, because not everyone responded to that survey. Limit businesses to spaces fronting their business, I don't know if that language is necessary because there are some unique situations for our businesses. And so I don't want us to create an ordinance and then be tied to restricting ourselves in those, in that matter. The staff to develop the method of allocating spaces to interested businesses, so this could be something, I'm going to recommend that we do bring this back in July. And perhaps you could have some more information on what some of those methods will look like. In addition, if in July, we can also see how those possible prototypes will include built-in safety measures. What was, how do the, is it architects? I don't know, Steve. Whoever makes those prototypes, what, how, what the thoughts are behind the, their safety measures. And in addition to that, if we do partner with Santa Cruz City and we put an RFP out to Councilmember Bertrand's concern, what are some, how can those prototypes include winter, winterization? I believe that is a real word, winterization, in those prototypes. And if we can build that in, that would be wonderful. The other thing that could come back in July is what Councilmember Peterson was suggesting, is limiting the private hours to public hours. Maybe we can do some research on what that looks like in other cities and how that's worked out for them. For the design, I agree that allocating up to 10,000 makes complete sense. And that we absolutely should allow for both prototypes and custom designs to, to be used with PC approval, should someone want a custom design. What I'll say about the design is that I think it's important for us to build in a system for checks and balances on what these, what these parklets look like. We often go by complaint-driven processes or procedures. And I don't want to see this, this ordinance go into effect and it goes awry and we just wait for somebody to complain about it. I believe staff definitely needs to build in an annual checks and balance into, into their system there. For the fees, I think it's great that we're supporting our businesses in the recommendation here by waiving the city permit fees. And understandably, the construction assistance is way too pricey for us to support. So that makes sense. And the rental space makes sense as well. So that makes sense, and the rental space makes sense as well. For the lease term, I think it's tricky, especially because our expectation is to see how this goes. So even if we move with Vice Mayor Story's for three years, I'm completely fine with that. But again, I want to build in a system for an annual check-in or maybe the first year every six months to see how it goes. And so when, if we move forward with my recommendation to bring it back in July, maybe you can talk about what that would look like beforehand. So that was a lot. Those are my notes. Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Just to confirm, Mayor, are you suggesting that we don't take any action on this tonight and it come back in July, or that we take an action and then in July, we modify it?
So I believe the language, help me, on Steve or Katie, was it your slide? That says the first step was optional to bring this back in July before going to Planning Commission. And it just seems that we're looking for some more information to help us maybe build off of it or include in the ordinance, like around safety or limiting the private hour, things that we may want to add to it. So perhaps, I would like to see this come back in July with those notes that I've given and then it'll go to Planning Commission.
Okay, what we talked about bringing back in July was a draft of the LCP amendment and ordinance. We can certainly, you know, come back in July with a report on the items you listed here. And kind of give you more information as that becomes available on those specific items. I don't think we will have a full draft program. We will not have, you know, prototypes or those ready in July, obviously. But we can come back with additional information and maybe even a type of a draft program of what we're thinking it would look like.
Yeah, and to your point, Mr. Jessberg, I think it would also allow us some time to think about those parklets that are not being utilized, because we're moving into another item around summertime, right? And events. And so perhaps in July, we can have that more meaningful conversation around, well, let's, maybe by that time, you'll have some time to check in with those businesses who are not utilizing them. Check in with them, see what their thoughts are, see if they're willing to collapse them. So then we can have a better gauge in July about what we, as a council, need to decide on in terms of moving forward.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. So, you know, I have concerns about not limiting the spaces only because the Coastal Commission has essentially told us outright that they have issues with us turning a public space into a private space. And so I feel like by limiting our number of spaces and having something like a lottery to provide those spaces to our businesses, that we're showing, you know, kind of an act of good faith, I suppose, that we understand what they're saying, that we want this, you know, to not be a really strong impact on the ability for the public to access coastal space. And so I would really prefer that we consider the limitation of 25 spaces, which is, you know, 50% less of what we're using right now and using some kind of lottery. I like the idea of this skipping us for the local, for the LCP amendment and going straight to Planning Commission, as they're kind of the experts. And I've always said that as a council member, I consider myself kind of a jack of all trades and a master of none. And so I feel like our Planning Commission is kind of those masters of these kinds of items. And so I think it would be really important for this to go to Planning Commission and then come to us. And again, if anyone wants to do some kind of custom design that's not related to any prototype designs, then that could go to Planning Commission as well. I like Councilmember Story's, excuse me, Vice Mayor Story's idea of a three-year lease, which is kind of an in-between of the two and four-year option. I like his, it's in the staff report, and also Vice Mayor Story's suggestion of waiving the permit fees. And I think that also, even if we were to move forward tonight, that we could still ask the businesses who aren't utilizing their spaces, that we can move their benches back. I think that is something that, as you mentioned, Mayor Brooks, is something that's important that we just, you know, if they're not using the space, there's no point in having the benches there. And then my final comment is, if the council, if it is the will of the council to continue this item, I would only ask that it be continued until August. We only have one meeting in July, and I will not be able to be present for that. So I would ask that it be continued until August. As the council's representative to the BIA, I would like to have an opportunity to bring whatever we discussed tonight back to the business owners so that they can give their input. And if I'm not able to be at the July meeting, I won't be able to relay their input back to the council. So with all that being said, you know, just for the sake of discussion, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the $10,000 from the city manager's event, what's it called, Jamie? Unexpected event budget, to develop some prototypes. Move forward with a preliminary plan to limit the spaces to 25 and have a lottery for those spaces if there's more businesses that need them than we're able to provide spaces for. To have it go to the Planning Commission for the local coastal plan amendment and for any custom request, design requests. To have three-year leases, to waive the permit fees, and to move the benches from any spaces from businesses that are not currently using them for outdoor dining. So that was a lot. I'm sorry, Chloe. I hope you caught all that.
I'll second that for discussion, and then I have a comment.
So I guess I maybe misunderstood Mr. Jessberg about the limited spaces. So forgive me. So the limited number of spaces is 25. And then above and beyond that, that's what this method of allocating spaces are for? Is it some sort of lottery you're speaking of?
No, that's not correct. What we're recommending, because of the input we got from the Coastal Commission, is keep capping the program at 25 spaces. And if we get requests for 30 spaces, we will determine and develop a method of allocating to those. But we would cap the number of spaces that would be allowed to be developed as an outdoor dining area to 25, per that recommendation. We just feel that the Planning Commission or the Coastal Commission won't approve what we have right now today.
So if we wanted five more, it would have to go back to Planning, or excuse me, Coastal Commission to approve above and beyond 25?
Yeah, so one of the things to keep in mind is that the way the Coastal Commission will look at our program is they will analyze the build-out of our program. Basically, what would be the maximum amount of parking spaces that could be displaced by the program? And they don't usually take sort of the reasonable approach by saying, you know, what would be a reasonable assumption of how many spaces would be lost? They'll say, hey, if every business can get four and there's 20 restaurants, that's 80 parking spaces. City, how are you going to mitigate the loss of 80 parking spaces? I don't think it's reasonable to expect that every business would want the maximum amount possible. So I actually think the 25 will probably be more than enough to accommodate everyone's desires for these things. But I also think that it's going to be really critical to getting it through the Coastal Commission without coming back from the Coastal Commission with really onerous mitigation measures that the city maybe wouldn't be able to live with.
Yeah, no, I mostly hear you. I hear you. I just know we're not the only coastal community making these requests during this time. And so I was just trying to get your train of thought on our approach. So that's funny. Thank you, that makes sense. Vice Mayor, or Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, getting back to the Coastal Commission, I'm trying to understand what's going on here as well. When this first came up, I asked about what the Coastal Commission would be thinking, and this is potential at that time. And my sense was that, hey, this is a good thing. It's going to bring more people to the coast, to enjoy the coast, because we're offering this benefit. And so now I'm getting a sense that they're vacillating or they've come to a new way of looking at it. Katie, can you give me an idea? Is this going back and forth? We're trying to, or are we trying to read something? We really don't, they don't have an understanding which way they want to move.
Yeah, what you're seeing, what you're seeing is the evolution of, you know, during COVID, they were extremely supportive of, you know, when you couldn't have occupancy in your restaurants, of letting that space convert to private space to support businesses during the pandemic. Now that we're coming out of the pandemic, they're really looking at the Coastal Act and they want to make sure that coastal access, you know, coastal access and recreation are the two main charges of the Coastal Act. And in that review, for the long term, they are going to request mitigation measures when they see an area, right now, parking is with it as a, it's part of, it's available to everyone. It's public. Anyone can park there. Whereas if it, once it changes over to a restaurant, it becomes private. So that review of access, coastal access, is the perception they're taking is that it's less available to the public once you've made it private. So they were extremely supportive across the board during the pandemic, but for the long-term plans, they're more conservative.
Okay, Katie, I understand what you're saying. I have two points in rebuttal. One is if we don't have very many parklets by comparison to other areas that do, we'll be less attractive. And if I understand our sense of available parking, we're over what is required because we have all these extra parking spaces that may or may not be used for hotels. So we provide plenty of parking spaces. So those two points, you know.
Well, Councilmember Bertrand, you seconded a motion that limits the number of space that's on the table. And I just want to call on Vice Mayor Story. And Council, this has just been a great conversation, and I just wonder, we're an hour and a half in, and we still have a whole other rest of agenda to get through. So we have a first and a second.
Just a minute, one clarification. I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we just, in Councilmember Peterson's motion, did she include the streets that we're going to include as recommended or not?
No.
It didn't include it, but I will add an amendment to my own motion to include the streets that are provided on the slide from the staff recommendation.
Okay, I'll second that. And I did second the original motion, as I said, for discussion purposes. And so I did have some ideas to discuss.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. Just a reminder, Vice Mayor Story, see your hand, the recommendation for streets, overall cap, design fees, and limit terms to three years is on the table. Vice Mayor Story?
Well, I was going to ask the question on the motion, but if you're ready to call the motion, I'll defer.
No, no, I just wanted to clarify that motion, just for Chloe's sake, that the motion on the floor is pretty much the whole summary with the only change of lease term to three years. Is that correct? Okay, so we have a first and a second. Vice Mayor Story, do you have any other comments?
I do, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, on the limit of 25, did that number come from the Coastal Commission?
No, it did not.
Okay. I guess I'll speak to why I don't support the current motion. And it is, most of the other items I agree with. But I don't agree with this stage limiting the number of spaces. It seems to me that we're negotiating with ourselves about the number of spaces that may be desired or necessary. And I think that we should approach it from seeing how many businesses are seriously interested and how many spaces that may utilize. And if we need to advocate for that, I think we should make some effort to do that. I fundamentally disagree with the Coastal Commission about their justification about coastal access. I don't think that parklets necessarily take away from coastal access. It could enhance coastal access. You can get more people in a parklet than you can cars that would be parked there. So I just fundamentally disagree with the Coastal Commission. And if we need to deal with mitigation measures, let's have that discussion. I think that we could maybe do that, and it would be for the benefit of everyone. And I think would enhance coastal access. And so that's why I don't support trying to pick winners or losers at this time and will, you know, and can't support that motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertrand?
I'm sorry, can I just provide one little bit of information? So, and Steve, you can help me out here in case I'm incorrect. But when we came up with the 25, we did exactly, we approached, I think, the way you were suggesting, by evaluating the businesses who had expressed interest in the parklets and seemed the most serious and tried to take a look at what those numbers would be like. So Steve, help me out if I'm, please correct me if I'm wrong. But the 25, frankly, I think was a little bit of a buffer beyond what we thought it was really going to be the demand for. But I completely understand the perspective of not wanting to negotiate with ourselves, A. And B, I also want to be very clear that this is not staff's position. We are simply informing the council of what the Coastal Commission's position has been. Frankly, I think that your arguments are very compelling to me, and they are the exact arguments we would make to them as well about the difference between outdoor dining and parking really not having any impact on coastal access at all. So Steve, if you could help me out and make sure that I'm correct about the 25, that number we think would accommodate everyone who has been serious about participating in the program. And please correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I think that's right. I quicked the count here and I came up with 22 of the more serious people who are maintaining theirs today and using it today and express interest. There's some that are, well, if my neighbor does it, I'll do it, but otherwise I don't. So we don't include those. I do think 25 would be sufficient. If everybody obviously wants to come back, but we see that they're not doing it now, then 25 would not be sufficient.
Thank you, Steve.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, based on Steve's comments, that was my sort of thought about this. I mean, we've given the parklets to the merchants for free. You know, some people have decided they want to, you know, develop a parklet and some developed a parklet and didn't even use it. And, you know, so an estimate based on what we actually see in reality suggests to me this number is probably a good one. I agree with Sam that, you know, I don't necessarily agree with the Coastal Commission and how they make their decisions, but they're a little bit more, you know, we're not in the driver's seat when it comes to this kind of agency. And so if we try to play with them a little bit to, you know, sort of see to what their reasoning is, then I'm willing to go along with that, just to get this whole parklet program started, that's all. But I do have an option to the maker of the motion, or maybe we could readdress this at some point. If we get full 25 participation and then later on, because it's so successful, two others want to get involved, it seems to me we could address that at that time and then come back and agree to expand the program. Would that something, Jamie, or the mayor? I mean, I don't know how to answer that question, but it seems to me if that's a possibility, we could do that at some time in the future.
That's correct. The submission of this program now, once we get approval from the Coastal Commission, wouldn't preclude us two years down the road from submitting another amendment.
So in other words, if we move ahead now with 25 and get that going and maybe 24 or 23 take it up, or 25 take it up and two, you know, want to be included, we have some wiggle room in the future.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, I agree with Sam's comments and, you know, Jamie, I'm glad you jumped in there because I agree with what you said, but I still support this motion.
Okay, so I'd like to call the question. Chloe, can we have a roll call? That was weird. There we go.
Yes, absolutely. And I'll just clarify, as you said yourself, Mayor Brooks, the motion is really for all of staff recommendations with one exception. Council is submitting a three-year term limit. So I'm not going to read everything, but that's what, it sounds like we're all in agreement. So Councilmember Bertrand?
I'm sorry, Chloe, now, Mayor, I just brought one other point. Crystal asked that we will bring this up in August. I don't know that that was clarified.
It would no longer need to be brought back since we're moving to a vote today. But I will say that those items about safety and the private hours and there's one other one next step, I'd like to see- one, next step, I'd like to see those items brought back for further, just for, I don't know, an update or report, Jamie.
We can do that.
Great. Okay.
Okay, I agree.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaiser is recused. Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Okay, this item passes 3/1. Great conversation, council members. We are almost two hours in, would we like to take a two-minute break? No. Okay, Vice Mayor Story wins. Go, we're moving on. That was all you get, that was quick enough. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item 8B, 2021 Summer Events Plan. Who's item is this? Larry, is this yours?
Yeah, it's, it's my, I, I will be, I will be doing the first bit of the city events, and Chief McManus will follow up with the special events, if that's okay?
Council, I'm just really excited about Larry's background.
You, you didn't get to see it earlier, that's right. Okay, I will be sharing my screen, and I hope you see it okay. So, the summer events, in Capitol, as we're all aware, well, first of all, they usually be started this time of year, and they didn't actually happen last year. So why we're bringing this to you is that we were, you know, at the beginning of June, we weren't sure how the rules were gonna be, and what we'd be allowed to do, and as of June 15th, the state rules for most outdoor gatherings, except for what they call mega events, which are over 10,000 people at, at a, at a single time, can be, can go on in our masks-free, and I think, oh, you know, we're starting to see more of those kind of pop up. City-sponsored events, normally, again, we would have started this, you know, mid-June through mid-September, what we've looked at, and what the council has budgeted for is kind of a, in, in next fiscal year, is kind of a smaller scale, not, all our number of events. We've gone through the plans, and we think we can get eight concerts, Twilight Concerts, Wednesday night, the, everybody is, the bands, believe it or not, really want to perform, so they're, they're good, and we think we're gonna do, we can do three of the Sunday Art and Music at the Beach events. And these have gone through, we've discussed this with the Art and Cultural Commission, and they're very much on board. We, we, we use the bands we, we kind of were planning on using last year as much as we could, so we didn't have to go through that process. And we're also talking about two movies on the beach later on, a little later this year, we find that the earlier ones start pretty late with the sun. One of the things we are changing, we definitely can't do the same sort of marketing we, we've done in the past, you know, with all the flyers and postcards, so we're kind of revising that. We really are gonna try and stay a little more locally focused. That being said, we can't exactly, you know, limit it, so we're, we're kind of working on that with Kelly Art and Cultural Administration, as well as the Rec Department. We're kind of trying to find ways to work together and, and also raise funds together to kind of help pay for this. So those are the, the summer events that the city is looking at. At this point, I'd like to pass over Chief McManus with the special events.
Thank you, Larry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. With regard to special event permitting, by way of just a few, an overview and a few reminders, you're aware that we have two categories under the special event program. We have general special events, which is those events that are, can you hear me all right? Okay.
Yeah, I can hear you too.
That have 200 people or more, and an expected impact on city services, those are general special event permits. Minor special event permits, on the other hand, have 200 or fewer people with no known impact on city services. To give you an idea, in 2019, the last full year, we had all of our special events in place. We had 10, issued 10 general special event permits. Of those, as you're well aware, there are five main events, or the largest of the 10 general special event, permanent events. Those are chronologically, the Car Show, Wharf to Wharf, Art and Wine, Capitola Beach Festival, and the Monte Fireworks Festival. Of those five, only the Art and Wine event would be considered a mega event under the new definition provided by the state under their Beyond Blueprint, in that it's an outdoor event with 10,000 or more expected people. So I wanted to provide that overview to start. As you're well aware, the, currently, in, in, current year, the Car, the Car Show has already canceled, that would have happened just a couple of weeks ago. Wharf to Wharf has also canceled. The city has received or is expecting to receive general special event permit applications for four total events for the remainder of the year, in this order. On September 11th and 12th is the Art and Wine Festival. The event organizer will decide to apply based upon council's direction tonight. And generally, that event, as you're well aware, it's our largest event, and it has about 25,000 or more people attended that event, during the weekend's event. Two weeks later, on the 25th and 26th of September, is the Capitola Beach Festival. That application has already been submitted, it's a slightly modified event compared to the last couple of years, because of the pandemic, they, they are not anticipating, they have not requested for road closures for this year's event, and the expected number of guests for that event is about 3,500 people for the nautical portion of the event, which is the largest of the many events as part of the Capitola Beach Festival. That's the largest of the events, they're expecting about 3,500 people. The other event is set at between 50 and 150, 200 people throughout the weekend. On October 9th is the Women on Waves Contest, that's about 250 or more participants is our, is our projected, it's a fairly large event. And then on October 10th is the Monte Fireworks Festival, which is anticipated to once again attract about 5 to 7,000 people for that event that occurs on a Sunday evening on October 10th. Next page, Larry. So the attendance figures, of course, for this year, because of the uniqueness of the year, are, are estimates only, but they're based in part on the numbers that we have, are known numbers from, attendance numbers from past events. And we have the luxury of relying upon those known numbers for many of these events, the part that we're talking about that have been in place for many years. But the actual attendance is unknown at this point. We do know that there are fewer events in the community, and there's a level of excitement for, because of the, the opening on June 15th and the removal of some of the restrictions, I think we're all seeing and appreciate the level of excitement. And so there's an increased desire to have, have events for, for many of our, our residents, for many staff as well, and then visitors, visitors to our area. Really important, there's no effective way to limit the attendance in the village for these outdoor events. There are publicly attended events, it's, it's almost impossible, impossible to limit the attendance, and that's not a bad thing, because we like to attract these numbers of peoples for these wonderful, people for these wonderful events. But it, but it's, it's not easy to, we, we in fact can't limit the attendance in the village. And so the staff is prepared to move forward with the proposed event list, and any recommended changes or direction provided by us by council tonight can be incorporated into the events. The events will follow any additional, the current COVID guidelines, and any additional COVID guidelines that, that may change between now and the actual date of these events. Next page, Larry. And so for this evening, our recommended action, number one is to approve the city-sponsored event program as outlined in this report, and number two, provide direction for issuance of other private special event permits. That concludes our presentation. Myself and Larry will be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Larry. Any questions from council? Okay. We'll go ahead and move this to, we'll open this up to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us, or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on Reactions, then clicking Raise Hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing 9 on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you, you will have up to three minutes to speak.
So Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody in the attendees that are, has their hand raised to speak, and let me check email, I do not have any emails on this topic.
Okay, we'll just give it a second. Zoom time goes by so much slower than reality time, so I know it's hard to be patient, but we're pros at this now. Okay, so we'll bring this, go ahead, Larry.
I, I was gonna make sure, I, I don't see any other people wishing to speak.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring this back to council for further deliberation and a vote. Councilmember Bertrand. Councilmember, you are muted.
So I have a question. It's been a while since we've done some of these events. Is the organizational structure still there, and, you know, do we have to take special measures to involve people, because a lot of them are dependent on volunteers?
I, I can speak for, are you, the, the city events, we've been kind of getting things in place as, as, as much as we can without fully committing. As far as the special events, I, I, I don't know, but I think the schedule that, the city events we've posted, we have, we have enough staff, and we can, we can get that, those going. I don't know about the special events, however. And if I might, Councilmember Bertrand, if you're referring to our management of the special events, the largest Art and Wine and the others that will be well-attended.
Correct.
The operational response and the resources in place to properly manage those events is the same as it has been in the past. Same number of resources, same approach, same need for an operational report in connection with, interaction with the organizers that will guide us in our response and delivery of resources.
Okay, thank you very much. I remember last year you had a command center, how did that work? Did that really aid in marshaling resources and dealing with issues?
Yeah, it always aids in managing the resources and providing a visible component within the venue itself, so that, you know, people can ask us questions, they can come say hello. The location of the command post is the most critical piece, and we will make some adjustments based upon the location in previous events, and where we might need the location of CP this year.
Thank you.
You're on. Vice Mayor Story.
I'd like to move staff recommendation.
Hold second.
We have a first and a second. Just real quick comment, it looks like our first event is July 14th for one of the Twilight Concerts, and so in our last conversation about the parklets, maybe this could be a goal to, to check in with parklets, with those who have parklets, they are not parklets themselves, but checking with the owners of the parklets to see if they're not utilizing them, to maybe use that as a deadline of some sort to shutter them. So just because we know we're kicking off, does that make sense, Larry?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know how much impact the parking has for the, for that event, but we can definitely work together.
Yeah, maybe just giving them a say, or just letting them know, we're, we're, we're hoping to move this forward. Okay, Chloe, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson.
I'm so sorry to interrupt the, the vote, I just wanted to confirm, and I'm sorry if I missed this, either in conversation or in the, in the staff report, but was there direction on the Art and Wine event potentially being a mega event? Are we giving any kind of direction on how to address that, or are we just moving forward with the approval of the other events? I, I apologize if I, if I missed that.
So I believe Chief McManus or Jamie, what we're agreeing upon is the Art and Wine, Art and Wine on September 11th will decide to apply up, up based upon council's direction during the meeting, generally 25,000 people guessed during the entire event, so I think that's what we're approving this evening, is status quo. Am I wrong?
So what's our guidance then? What's our direction? If they're gonna apply based on our direction, and our direction is just to approve it, what, what does that mean? If it's a 25,000 person or more event, does that mean they have to require masks, or are we, if, if we could just get feedback on that, my apologies.
So, what, if, if council gives direction to staff, they issue the SCPs, the special event permits for the major special event permits, one of the conditions staff will include for the special event permits is compliance with all the health laws, so we will have to work with the event organizers to ensure if one of the events is a mega event, or if the rules around large events were to change, that Art and Wine complies with whatever rules that the state has for us at that time.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Sorry to interrupt the vote, Mayor Brooks.
Okay, let's, Chloe?
Yes. I'm just gonna start from the beginning. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Peterson. Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye.
Take this item, 8B, 2021 Summer Events Plan passes unanimously before moving on to item 8C. Vice Mayor Story, you have your hand raised.
I'll start over. Thank you, Mayor. I need to recuse myself from this item. I rent an office at 314 Capitol Avenue, and as such, it's in the Village and the BIA membership, therefore I have the financial conflict of interest. So, I'll come back when you're, have concluded.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Story. Okay, now turn this over, item 8, or excuse me, 8C to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks, and good evening, council. Let me take a moment to share my screen. Get my PowerPoint going here. Can you all see that okay?
Yes.
All righty, so this next item is the Capitola Village and Wharf Business Improvement Area Assessments for Fiscal Year 2122.
Oh, Jim, will you hit present for us?
What's that?
Present, so we can, we can see it much bigger. I'm sorry. From the beginning, on the top left.
On the top left?
Little button.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Jim, I think you're sharing the wrong screen.
I think, I think you're sharing the right screen. Yeah, it's, it's fine, I was just trying to have you make it bigger by presenting your whole slide deck, instead of asking your left of your toolbar, but that's technicality, I'll, I'll make my screen bigger.
How's that?
Go for it.
In, under slideshow, from beginning, in the upper-left corner there.
Right, no, that's what I'm doing, and that's how, I've tried two different share.
That's weird, we're seeing just the slide, the outline format.
Really? Try one more.
I think there's sometimes an option in the bottom-right too, just the little logos down in the toolbar, for PowerPoint? I don't know, technology.
Not sure why it's not working. I can do it.
Jim, I'm fine with it, I, I made it bigger on my screen.
I tried like three different little options there.
Thank you for trying.
All righty. So just by way of background, BIA was established with the adoption of ordinance 889 in June of 2005. The BIA is a business-based self-imposed assessment district in which the businesses pay assessments into the district, and that promotes different activities, attracts tourists, and revitalize those businesses. And the, the assessment amounts are determined by the type of business classification and the number of full-time equivalents. For Fiscal Year 2122, we are, or the BIA is proposing to reduce assessments by 25% for all businesses, with the exception of hotels and lodging, and reduce their assessments by 50%. Businesses generally can make in lieu payments in the form of gift certificates for use by the BIA, and those amounts of in lieu payments are fixed by business category, but there are no in lieu payments for Fiscal Year 2122. As far as our process, on June 10th, the city council set a public hearing for this evening, and that was noticed to end the Santa Cruz Sentinel, and mailed to all the affected business owners within the BIA. California State Law and our municipal codes- California State Law and our municipal codes required that the city council conduct a public hearing annually prior to approving these assessments, and those assessments are based on the plan and budget that is submitted by the BIA each year. And just as a reminder, there is no fiscal impact associated with this item, so the city is, all services provided by the city are reimbursed by the BIA. Also, just wanted to remind everyone that there is a Measure J, which was approved by voters in 2018, restricted a portion of our transit occupancy tax revenue for local business groups. And in February of 2019, city council directed that TOT revenues for restricted, restricted for local business groups are split evenly between the BIA and the Capitola Opel Chamber of Commerce. And this year's budget includes $28,000 of estimated restricted TOT revenue for the BIA. The proposed assessments, you can see the amounts there for the different business categories. So just as a reminder, all of those amounts are 75% of what the maximum allowed assessment would be, so they've been reduced by 25%. With the exception of hotel, motel, and in on the bottom, that one is 50% of the maximum allowed, so it's been reduced, cut in half. And so our recommended action this evening is to conduct a public hearing and adopt the proposed resolution that being the fiscal year 2122, Capitola Village and Warp Business Improvement Area Assessments and accepting the BIA annual plan and budget. And that's it for my presentation, and I am here for questions, and we have members of the BIA that are attending meetings as well.
All right, thanks Jim. Okay, so council members, do we have any questions? Same then, well now, oh, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yes, why was the in lieu drop that's been around for a while?
I'm gonna defer to Karen. We dropped them last year, and they proposed to drop them this year, so I'm gonna defer to Karen or one of the other members of the BIA that are on the call. Yep, there's Karen.
Good evening again. There's a combination of reasons. Last year we dropped them just as an additional cost savings to the businesses during the pandemic. It's also extremely cumbersome to manage both from the BIA volunteer secretary standpoint and for the city accounting staff. And so we've sort of gone to a model of asking for gift certificates when we need them for a special occasion or contest. I believe that our plan is next year to have a, you know, a total reevaluation of the dues and revisit the issue. It was, again, in the very beginning, the gift certificates were suggested in order to just save the members a little bit of revenue. So the ones that really felt that they were pinched, they were able to, you know, give some in lieu payment. But it doesn't seem to be as necessary or as popular. And that's, that's why the hotel revenue, the hotel dues have gone down, because last year we did also offer them the opportunity to give gift certificates. Again, a little bit cumbersome for them, and so we did away with it for this year.
Okay, any other questions from council members? Okay, now we'll move this to, open this to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you, you have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees asking to talk on this item, and I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay. So we'll bring this back to council for further comment and deliberation.
I propose adopting the, the proposed, excuse me, charges or fees.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt, and Councilmember Bertrand, if I may, this is to adopt the 2021-22 Budget and Capital Improvement Program for the City of Capitola. I'm sorry, that's the wrong item, isn't it? I read it wrong. That's item C, so Resolution for the Levy of City of the Capitola Village and Warp Businesses Improvement Area Assessments for Fiscal Year 2122.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
And Mayor Brooks.
Hi.
So that item passes. Now we're gonna move on to item 8D. Vice Mayor Story, would you like to come back? Welcome back.
I think we have Councilmember Kaiser back as well, correct?
That's right.
We can ask her to come back anyway?
Welcome back, Councilmember Kaiser. Okay, we're moving on to item 8D. Consider the fiscal year 2122 Budget and Capital Improvement Program for the City of Capitola. I'll turn this over to staff.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening again, let me try to do this a little differently this time. Give me one second. Ah, it's really annoying. So that didn't work. Didn't work. So I had a tip given to me on how to make this happen, and it's not really working yet.
It never does when you want it to.
If you'd like Jim, you can email it to me and I can run it for you.
Is that the same thing? Or is that one working?
We see it.
Yeah, it's still not the slide, the presentation, but I think it gets the job done.
Okay, I don't have that meeting. It's just I have three of them tonight, it'd be nice if one of them would work correctly. Okay, so this is for adoption of the proposed budget. Can you all see that? Or is it not even working at all now?
We do not see it.
You're not sharing.
Alright. Outline still?
Yes, but we see it.
Alright, I'm sorry. So this is for adoption of the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. And just to remind you of kind of how we got here, our proposed budget was distributed on April 30th. The Finance Advisory Committee held meetings on May 4th and May 18th, providing recommendations to city council at both meetings. City council held special public hearings on May 5th and May 20th, and at the May 20th meeting provided direction for staff to return tonight with the resolution for budget adoption. As, just kind of to go over the general fund, our operating budget remains balanced with just under a $1,400 surplus, and we're targeting, maintaining a $750,000 ending fund balance in June of next year. We have, we're estimating that we're gonna end this year with about 1.4 million, so we'll be utilizing 650,000 of the existing fund balance for capital improvement projects and city council goals, and those include the utility undergrounding, pavement management, Park Avenue traffic calming, preliminary design for Kennedy Drive sidewalk at Park Avenue, Monterey Park and New Bright Middle School fields, community grant strategic plan, Monterey Park picnic benches, pre-teminent hygiene products in public restrooms, and doing one additional newsletter to help keep residents informed. So that's about $585,000 that's been programmed towards the capital improvement program. So just to kind of recap that, this is what we discussed a lot at the May 20th meeting. So projects for next fiscal year will be Claire's and Warp Traffic Calming, 41st Avenue Adaptive Single Control. The Monterey and Park pedestrian pathway is still pending some environmental work, and I think we're gonna be working with RTC there. Rispin Park, we have an application for a grant, and we're waiting to see how that grant funding works out. The Roundabout at Cap Ave and Bay Avenue, we have 200,000, but our first step is gonna be public outreach, so there won't really be much project stuff there, it's mostly just public outreach at this point. Utility undergrounding at the same intersection, pavement management, we actually have two years' worth of funding there, so we're a little over a million dollars for pavement management this year. And then the new projects there, the Kennedy Drive, Monterey Park, and Park Avenue Traffic Calming, I mentioned on the prior slide. And then we also have the emergency tower at City Hall Complex. I recall we've received a 300,000 dollar grant for that, and we'll be adding another $90,000 from our facility fund, so that can kind of leave solar. And then at this point, we have a total budget for our Warp Resiliency Project, just under 5.7 million. We spent that down a little bit, but that was the total budget for that. As far as city council direction from the May 20th meeting, you requested that, or directed the staff, reduce the general fund transfer to the equipment, internal service fund by 100,000 in each the next two years. And then we turned around and programmed that into personnel costs to kill health bill key responsibilities. Kind of slow down, those two words. Of 100,000 in each the next two years. We'll be allocating 63,000 of restricted TOT revenue for early childhood and youth programs, with 33,000 go into the community grant program, and 30,000 to the recreation divisions. Again, both of those are for early childhood and youth programs only. And then we anticipate we'll be receiving 1.89 million of American Rescue Plan funding, and we've programmed 1.84 towards the Warp Resiliency Project, and 50,000 towards a small passenger van for Recreation Division. Some additional revisions that we've made since the May 20th hearing is we've increased cannabis business tax revenue by 10,000. I was kind of on the fence on this one when we first started putting the budget together, but now we have a couple more months of data, so I'm comfortable bumping that one up. For the workers' compensation, the 9/11 JPA, the LACO payment, and the liability insurance, those were all estimates in the proposed budget. Those entities have now, or agencies have now finalized their budgets, and so I know what the actual amounts are. So we've decreased workers' comp by a little over 14,000. We've decreased our 9/11 JPA payment by a little under 5,700. LACO membership payment by 200. But then we increased our liability insurance by a little over 21,000. The other two revisions that we've made, we've increased public works contract services for riparian restoration. I just had a bad number in there, and once we started going through and double checking everything, we realized we needed to bump that one up. And then we increased the Criminal Justice Center JPA membership payment by 3,000. This was just a miss, we didn't have this one last year, and we just missed it the first pass through this time, so we've added that back in. And that's for two seats at 1,500 each. Some things we'll be talking about as far as mid-year follow-up items, the sales tax revenue, key dates there. We'll get our fourth quarter data for this year on August 23rd. We'll get first quarter data for fiscal year 2122, November 19th, and then second year, which is through, or second quarter through December. We'll get on February, they haven't given a date, it's typically right around the 20th. We'll also be monitoring our TOT and cannabis business tax revenues. We get those on a monthly basis on the 10th each month. And then just as a reminder, in addition to the 1.4 million dollar general fund balance that I mentioned earlier, we still have the 600,000 dollar COVID stabilization account that we're gonna be keeping in place and then reevaluating at mid-year. We'll bring that back to council then. So for a summary, our general fund is structurally balanced in the year that, in 2122, as well as throughout the five-year forecast, and our reserves remain at target balance levels. Our general fund revenues are estimated to return close to pre-pandemic level, and staff will continue to closely monitor sales tax, TOT, parking, and the cannabis business tax revenues. On the general fund expenditure side, services, service levels are generally returning to pre-pandemic levels. We return funding for our seasonal employees to help out on the Estmona and the beach and just throughout the city during the busy summer months. We've also returned funding to our community grant program, and that'll be a combination of general fund dollars and CBG coronavirus grant funding, but it should be back to the levels that we had prior to the pandemic. And then we are still holding six vacant positions frozen and have not budgeted to fill those during this fiscal year. And that completes my presentation, and our recommended action is to approve the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2122 operating budget and capital improvement program. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks Jim. Okay, any questions from council members? Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, I have a question, so for the Monterey Park, and there's $10,000 for benches. So I spent some time talking to a few neighbors, it was an extensive survey. Some people had the idea of improving the track, doing a bocce ball court, and one that kept coming up was to have a public meeting to see what actually people wanted. So the way it's presented, change that so that we actually have a public meeting? And does it mean that we have to do benches because if we pass it, it says benches? Or can we just leave it fungible so that with the public meeting, people say, well, I prefer a bocce ball court? I don't know if the budget's there for that, but that kind of idea.
I'm thinking that if that's what we wanted to do in the motion, we would wanna accept staff's recommendation, but for the Monterey Park, leave it, don't be specific to the benches, just leave a thousand dollars programmed for park improvements.
Yeah, let's do, I thought it was 10,000, but yeah, let's do it so that there's money left for park improvements, and let the public decide at a public meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, so Councilmember Bertrand, I'm gonna have you hold that motion until we get there, but that's noted. Any other questions before we take this to public comment? Okay, so we'll open this up to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, you can email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine on your landline. A moderator will unmute you, and you will have up to three minutes to speak. Larry, anyone in the audience who'd like to speak?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody in the audience that wants, or has their hand raised to speak on this item, and I do not see any emails from the public on this item.
Okay, so I'll bring this back to council for further comment and deliberation. Councilmember Bertrand, would you like to start then, since you proposed a motion?
Yeah, I'm adopting the fiscal year 2021-2022 city budget capital improvement program with one change, leaving the money identified for Monterey Park as a general amount for park improvements to be decided after a public meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
I'll second that, being sure.
Second. Okay, do we have any further comments from council members? Okay, we know, we'll go ahead and do this for, you know.
Councilmember Bertrand.
Hi.
Councilmember Kaiser. Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Story.
Hi.
Mayor Brooks.
Hi. So this item passes unanimously. We're now gonna move on to item 8D. This is a recruitment process for the chief of police and designation of city council members to serve on the interview panel.
Thank you Mayor Brooks. I apologize if I have pothairs everywhere, the cat just jumped on me and shed all over my. The cat just jumped on me and shed all over my black sport coat. Okay, so as I'm sure the council and the community is aware, Chief McManus has announced his retirement coming up this coming November. He will have served the city for more than five years at that point. We will all be very sorry to see Chief McManus go. He's done such a wonderful job in our department. As council will recall, the management compensation plan does require public review and council approval of a plan to replace the police chief when we do have a vacancy. So that's what this item is intended to be this evening. As part of developing a police chief recruitment plan, staff issued a request for proposals and got three proposals from professional recruiting firms for to help with the police chief recruitment, including a proposal from Bob Murray and Associates. Bob Murray and Associates actually helped the city both in 2012 and '16 with our recruitment process. Chief Joel Bryden, who works at Murray and Associates, assisted us with the 2016 recruitment. And in the proposal they submitted this time around, he was the lead recruiter. The cost is $25,000, which is in line with the two other proposals that we received. At this point, staff is not recommending a budget amendment. We will need to continue to monitor our overall, when I say personnel costs, I don't mean personnel like staffing costs, but our personnel budget for recruitment and backgrounding and things like that to see where we stand. We may have to recommend an amendment at the mid-year budget. But we will keep track of that, but we're not suggesting that at this time. In terms of a recruitment plan, we've laid out the following. We want to have a very inclusive and transparent recruitment process, which would include meetings with key stakeholders with the POA directly, Police Officers Association, to talk about the traits that would be desirable and needed in our future chief. We're hoping to open a recruitment in mid to late July, maybe early August. And then holding a community forum in July or August as well to talk a little bit about what traits the new chief needs to have. The recruitment would close probably six weeks after we open it. And at that point, then Murray and Associates would begin going through a backgrounding process on the chiefs, doing preliminary screening interviews, and then making a recommendation to the city about which candidates would be moving on as finalists. The finalists would then advance to recruitment panel, interview panels. I'm proposing that we should have three interview panels. One internal, that would be comprised of department directors, as well as up to two council members, if there's an interest by the city council to participate in the process. A professional panel, that would include existing retired chiefs. Chief McManus has offered to serve on the panel, as well as a representative from our POA, as a valuable voice at the table. And then a community panel, that would be made up of community and business leaders. And then the whole process, the way it works is that each finalist, chief finalist, would interview each panel. And then at the end of the day, the panels meet as a group, come up with their rankings and ratings. And then I bring all the panels together, and we all meet together in the same room and talk about sort of what each panel is recommending, and talk about the differences and where they arose to try to come up with sort of a cohesive strategy about who to advance as a finalist. So the recommendation this evening is that you authorize the recruitment process as I've outlined in this presentation. Authorize me to enter into a contract with Murray and Associates to conduct recruitment. And if interested, designate up to two council members to help serve on the interview panel. And with that, unavailable questions?
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks. So Jamie, the community forum would be separate from the community panel, right? So it'd be prior to working all that out, it would actually be like more people involved?
That's correct. The community panel, so a police chief interview process is something that, in which confidentiality is an important component. So I would not recommend that we hold sort of public interviews, if you would, of candidates.
Yeah.
The community workshop, community outreach process would really be to talk to the community about the kinds of traits that we need to see in a new, in a new police chief. You know, what are the things that the community is looking for in a future police chief?
Cool, yeah, no, I think that's great. It's not a question, but I will also offer to be part of that process if nobody else misses it. Thanks.
Any other questions from council?
You're muted, Councilmember Bertrand.
Okay, I like the fact that there's going to be a reevaluation of what the direction would be and desires would be for police departments. Because things change. Some things are still basic. And I was part of that before, and I'd like to be part of it again. Thank you very much.
Any questions from council members? No? Okay.
And we had talked to his retirement and required that he stay.
That's a very good question.
Just kidding, all right.
Chief, don't answer that.
Yeah, really?
Okay.
It's good and bad. We're glad, we're glad you stayed with us.
So if you'd like to make a public comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you. You have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see either of our attendings wishing to, or raising their hand on this. Oh wait, oh wait, I'm sorry. Raising their hand to talk on this item. And I do not see any public comments on this item.
Okay, so we'll bring this back to council for further comments. Vice Mayor Story?
Thank you, Mayor. This is going to be off topic, but I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate Chief McManus. And more importantly, to thank him publicly and personally for not only his, well, his 30 years of police work. And, you know, in five years with the city of Capitola, he has done a marvelous job, as far as I'm concerned, in keeping the community safe and leading our, I think, wonderful team of public safety officers. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge him, to thank him, thank him for his work on the Capitola Community Safety Foundation, where I got to observe firsthand, you know, his commitment to Capitola, his accessibility, professionalism, and good humor through it all. So you're going to be sorely missed, Chief McManus. But congratulations on going, you know, entering into the next phase of your life. So I'll end it there. Thank you.
If I may, thank you for the kind words, Vice Mayor Story. You know, it's been an honor and a pleasure. And honestly, you're making me feel young tonight with only 30 service years because it's just a little, almost 36. So I appreciate that because I feel five years younger. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that correction and all, you know, well deserved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. I echo everything that Vice Mayor Story just said. And thank you so much, Chief McManus. You've been an exemplary leader in our community and in our city. And we will be very sad to see you go. It's been just absolutely a pleasure and an honor to have worked with you in these last several years. I know that you have already volunteered. I'd like to throw my hat in the ring as well. And I don't mean to sound like a broken record, but there is a special place in my heart for the Capitola Police Department. And I would very much like to be involved in this process if there's an opportunity for me to do so. But it will be a very difficult task. There will be large shoes to fill for Chief McManus. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yeah, I'd like to point out something that I think, well, first of all, there's a lot that Chief has done that I don't know about, and I think a lot of us don't know about. But one thing he's done that I'd like to take particular note of is developing the police department, giving them training where needed so that they could advance in their career. I think this has been particularly important for Capitola. In anyone's career, the idea that you get to support a management to advance, I think is critical for creating a department that has a lot of sense of this is a family or whatever that has our interests at heart. And they give back in turn more to the city, in this case of Capitola. So the fact that the chief did this with the idea of developing a more capable department, I think has been very critical for the success of our police department in providing services to the city of Capitola. And, you know, I've spent a lot of time doing ride-alongs with the police during the process that I participated in, in choosing the last police chief. I particularly took a lot of advantage of that. And what I did then was to try to get an idea of what the people in the department felt was important for a new police chief. And it was very educational. And if I'm chosen by the city council today to be a part of this committee of two, I'm going to do the same thing. Things do change. And one thing that I thought was very important was the ability to project a sense. And I was very impressed when the chief came on board. The sense of leadership was almost immediately established. And I think the chief also elevated our police department to a much advanced level of professionalism. And that goes hand in hand with the training too, which has been carried out through the whole five years. So, you know, if I'm chosen and I'm committed again to do ride-alongs, I think it's very critical for people in the city council to do that in general. But at this particular juncture, where we actually have to choose someone who's going to lead the police department for, who knows, the next five years or more, I think it's critical for us to be very aware of the issues from that side of the equation. In other words, the guys that are actually doing the job. We're elected by the public to try to represent the concerns of the public. But also, we need to understand the people who are actually carrying out what we need to be concerned about, like public safety and engaging with the public in a way that the public feels trust from the police department. There's many things that we have to understand on both sides of the equation. And I'm committed to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bertrand. Well, Chief, I'm going to save my 30-minute speech for when you actually leave. You have a few more months on the books here, so you're, it's coming, okay? But I'm not going to say goodbye quite yet. What I want to ask, yeah. Now, I think more like 40 minutes I'll do. I'll just keep everyone hanging on there. This question is actually for Jamie. When you were talking about the community input, I just want to make a comment that ideally I'd like to see you tap into. There's a lot of groups on equity that have been built in the last, or created in the last year especially in our community. And I would love for you to tap into some of those organizations when looking for community input, especially from the BIPOC community, our community members. So it might not necessarily just be from Capitola, but throughout Statenexis County because the chief's police position most certainly affects everyone countywide and throughout the state because we're such a tourist community. So I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, so we have the hard discussion, or decision to make on who will the two be. I'm going to ask just a follow-up question. Jamie, is there any way to spread those interested in participating amongst the different groups? So perhaps all three council members, and there are different types of, on that side, you had different types of organization. Could they all sit in at a different level to find some middle ground?
Well, I mean, I think the challenge is that we lose, so the council cannot meet outside of a regular meeting, more than two members. And so if we had more than two members participate, there'd be, there's no way to have three members participate in really the after-interview process, which I view as really kind of a critical component to the interview process. Part of my reasoning behind that is that there's been multiple times where I've seen panels come up with different recommendations. For example, a community panel might rank somebody very highly, and a professional panel might rank the person much lower. And if people don't participate in the joint session where they all get a chance to hear the other's perspectives, I would hate to have somebody miss out on hearing the perspectives of the different panels. And understanding that maybe the community panel might have ranked somebody very high, but the professional panel might say, look, this individual really wasn't qualified for the position. And so I don't have an easy way to do it. Technically, we could have more than two if they participated in different panels. But it's very difficult to see how, to arrange kind of the post-interview process the way I have envisioned it and the way I've experienced it works best.
Okay, so I'll just give my opinion then here. I think Councilmember Peterson would most certainly be a great fit for, for one of the representatives. She sits on the CJC, the Criminal Justice Committee currently, and has worked with the chief over the last year on that committee and in other capacities. So I think she would be a great addition to one of those seats. Vice Mayor Story, do you have any input?
Well, actually, I do, since you asked me, Mayor Brooks. And I agree with your thoughts about Councilwoman Peterson. I think that she would make a great addition to the recruitment process. And we also had, you know, two other volunteers. I don't, were you volunteering, Mayor Brooks?
No, that was Councilmember Kaiser.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, Councilmember Kaiser. And, well, I would say that we have Councilman Bertrand and Councilmember Woman Kaiser maybe draw straws and see which one of them gets elected to participate.
Rose Jumbo, this is, yeah, most certainly the challenge because both of you are very capable of sitting on the hiring committee, if you will. I really don't know if either one of you are willing to take a step back and let the other move forward, or I don't really know what the appropriate, I don't know how to moderate this conversation, folks.
Yeah, it's a difficult one, I have to admit. Yeah, I've been on the CJC for about four or five years. And then I thought it was a good time to let someone else jump in. And so I stepped away and left Kristen.
Well, actually, that was me. That was me last year. But.
Well, I was one, I think. But there was some confusion as to the membership, but I'd been on for a long time. So I participated in multiple seminars and events that they've put on. So anyway, no, I do not want to step back.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Yeah, I'm the alternate on the CJC. And I also feel like Jacques has done a great job and has had his opportunities to move forward with chief or ride-alongs and things like that. And I would be more than grateful to take on the task as a newcomer and have that be sort of something that I could take on in my, in my new role here. So I would really appreciate the consideration. And yeah, if we got to draw straws or whatever, that's fine too. Just my two cents.
So is anyone willing to make a motion? Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, of course, both Councilmember Bertrand and Councilmember Kaiser are, you know, quite qualified for this role. And as Councilmember Bertrand mentioned, he had previously served on CJC and has been engaged in other activities with the police department. And seeing, my thoughts at this time are that seeing that Councilmember Kaiser and myself are the representative and alternate on the Criminal Justice Council, which Chief McManus currently serves on as well, I do feel like it would be appropriate for she and I to serve. um, I do feel like it would be appropriate for she and I to serve, um, on this interview panel. And so I will make a motion, uh, that she and, if it's, if it's appropriate to make a motion that, that, um, includes myself, I'll turn to the city attorney to, to let me know if it's not, but otherwise, I would, I would make a motion. That, that's appropriate? Is that okay? Okay, so then I will make a motion, uh, that she and I, uh, serve on the, um, interview panel for our, uh, recruitment of our new police chief.
Okay, may I have a, uh, and is that also with all of the rest of? I'm just looking over the recommendation from, a recommended action from staff. I believe there was some other language in there to enter a contract with Bob Murray. Councilmember Peterson, would you like to restate your motion?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll, uh, move to a first staff recommendation and appoint myself and Councilmember Kaiser to the, uh, recruitment panel.
Okay, so we have a first from Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. May I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
Aye.
Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Okay, this item passes for one. Thank you very much, everyone, and for your flexibility. Um, we're going to now move on to item 8F. This is consider the fee schedule for fiscal year 2122. I'll turn this over to staff.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm going to save you the pain of me trying to figure out the screen sharing. Larry's going to do this for me, but I have a few slides to go through.
Looks great.
Should be much better this time around. So, um, just by way of background, reviewing the fee schedule is part of our annual budget process. Our current fee schedule was adopted in November of 2015. Uh, we had done a comprehensive fee schedule, and the consultant at that time recommended an annual review and consumer price index increase each year. Uh, most fees have been increased each year by the San Francisco Bay Area annual CPI rate for fiscal year 2122. That, um, which is the calendar year of 2020, the, the CPI rate is 1.72% and staff is recommending increasing all fees by 1.72%. Just to give a little history, over the last, um, four years, you can see from fiscal year 1718 through 1920, we were anywhere from 3.01% to 3.87%. Uh, last year, the CPI was 3.31, but we did zero, 0% increase due to COVID-19. So I think, um, kind of using our way back in at the 1.72 is, is appropriate. Um, as far as the cost of fee study that I mentioned, the best management practices recommend conducting a comprehensive fee study every five years. We had begun the process, um, in January of 2020, anticipating fee adjustments last July. However, due to the pandemic, we, um, slowed that process down, and we're getting ready to revive it right now. So we anticipate completing the cost of, um, service fee study this fall and coming back to council later in this calendar year, early in 2022, to review the results. And any adjustments to fees would tentatively go into effect in July, July 1st of next year. Um, some proposed fee amendments, though, in addition to just the fees that we have and increasing them by the 1.72%, we have a few amendments that we're proposing. The first is, uh, removal of after-school teen club fees and the addition of after-school resident, non-resident daily fees. So before, we had an after-school, uh, teen club, and we had an after-school program for K through six. We're just kind of consolidating that since the fees are the same, and then we're, uh, adding a resident, non-resident fee. Addition of, uh, under-19 resident, non-resident junior guard fee of 190. Um, addition of Camp Capitol a half-day, two-week sessions, and extended daycare, both in the morning and in the evening. And then, um, a junior guard transportation fee. And then we will be removing the out-of-school time fees as that program came to an, uh, conclusion at the end of the school year and now that we've moved into out-of-the-tier system. I want to, there's one more on there. Oh, and, uh, addition of a patio rental fee, which is new. Um, as far as planning fees, uh, we're proposing the addition of a tree replacement in lieu fee, the addition of a deposit for tree removals that require planning commission approval. Um, that fee's estimated, it was, I think it's about five and a half hours of work at, uh, about $150 an hour plus 147 for public noticing. Addition of minor modifications permit fee, we're estimating that to be 90.4 hours at 150 per hour plus 147 for public noticing. And then the addition of a historical significance determination deposit, and we're proposing 4,250 based on just the historical average of what that's cost us to do. Next slide, please. And so our, tonight, our recommendation is to conduct the notice public hearing and adopt the resolution that would be adopting our fee schedule for fiscal year 2122 as well as adopting the animal services fees as set by San Cruz County. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Peterson?
Thank you. If you could go back one slide to the, the planning, I have two questions, but one of them is about the planning deposits. Yeah, so historical significance deposit, um, deposit for tree removals, so that makes me think that these are all refundable? If it's just a deposit? Like typically, you give a deposit to, to hold, and then it's given back to you. So is that the case?
I believe what we do is we collect the deposit and then we charge against it. And if, um, if there's money remaining at the end, then we return the balance. But, uh, I know Katie's, um, attending, and I should be correcting if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so that's exactly correct. So for the deposit for the planning commission review, um, we would bill hourly for our time, and there's also a public noticing fee, but any portion of that not utilized would be refunded. And the same for the historical significance determination deposit. We would use a third party to do the review of historic determination. And at that billing, if it was a really simple, um, review, typically those come in at about, uh, like 30, about 3,000 to 3,500. Um, and then there's fees on top of that. So it's the historical average, but any portion of that deposit not utilized would be refunded. It's not, uh, just a deposit. We do have a tree deposit, um, that once you've planted your tree, you get the full refund.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Uh, and then my only other question is the, the junior guard, uh, fee. Does that mean we're adding $190 to the, to the cost that it, it already is to participate in junior guard? Or am I misunderstanding?
Um, it's actually a fee that we've had for quite a while. It just never made it into the fee schedule, so we're officially putting it into the fee schedule and planning on starting to collect it now.
So, but, so then it is an addition, or it doesn't change the cost to participate?
It's a fee that we've had established for years at $190. It just wasn't listed on the, on fee schedule.
Okay, so the cost doesn't change?
Correct.
Okay, okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Story?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to ask about the, uh, under-planning fees, the tree replacement in lieu fee. Is, is that a fee that somebody could pay in lieu of, uh, replacing a cut-down tree with two other trees?
So, um, actually, our ordinance, it's built in that we should have a tree replacement in lieu fee. And during, um, we, we went back and looked at a prior resolution that was tied to the ordinance there. Actually, the fee was in that original resolution, so we're, um, adopting what was originally, um, into the fee schedule, it was originally approved within a prior resolution years ago. So it, it is a tree replacement in lieu fee, um, in which it gives, within the code, there are different scenarios in which you can pay an in lieu fee rather than do a replanting. Um, and that, now it will be built into the fee schedule.
Okay, what, what's, um, the, the rationale for, um, allowing people to pay a fee instead of replacing a tree that they may remove? Uh, wouldn't that have the effect of overall reducing our canopy?
Right. This is, um, like for PG&E, when they've removed a, a lot of trees throughout the city, um, it gives them the ability to put a larger deposit into our, into our in lieu fee that we could then go and utilize that tree fund money towards. Uh, one recent idea was planting trees in our lower lot, um, or somewhere else that's appropriate and has more of an impact on our camp, canopy throughout Capitola.
So it, it wouldn't be, uh, available to every applicant for a tree removal?
No, typically, you have to, um, there, there, there are different scenarios in which it would be applicable, and public utilities is one, so.
Okay, um, thank you. I'll reserve comment till later.
No questions? Okay, I have a quick question about page 89 when we're talking about the memorial plaques. And I know we just updated some of the memorial plaques, like on, um, and I just was curious, is Grand Avenue the one that we just agreed upon to extend the plaques on? I just want to make sure it's included in the exhibits before we approve this evening. For those updates here.
I'm going to have to actually defer to Larry on that one.
So, I'm sorry, I might, it, no, Cliff Avenue was what was just, just approved. So I, I may have missed that on the, uh, fee schedule. But, uh, we, we actually just have a, a single fee for memorial plaques for wherever they, they are. So I didn't realize it was listed by location.
Yeah, it says Warford, then Grand Avenue.
Okay, so it's Cliff Avenue is the other location.
Okay.
And I'll get that cleaned up.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to public comment if there's no other questions. Okay, we'll open this up to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to the seat, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing *9 on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you. You will have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, any attendees, and I do not see any public comment on this item.
Okay, we'll bring this back to the council for further discussion and a vote. Any other comments from council?
Uh, this is Director Hurley. Can I follow up on, um, on the prior question? I just wanted to clarify that for the in lieu fee, the only, um, opportunity when you can use the in lieu fee is when, um, a replacement tree cannot be planted on the site. So, um, it, it is not an alternative to plant. It, it's the one alternative when you cannot plant on the site, just to be clear. And in the past, um, PG&E has been the example of when we, we would want to utilize the in lieu fee. Thank you.
Yes, that, thank you for that clarification. That, that dispels, um, my concern. I, I would just maybe suggest in the fee schedule that we know that it's, um, you know, um, if available, um, that that's the amount of the fee, so.
I can have that in there.
Vice Mayor Story, is that a motion?
Oh, um, yes, of course. I was, um, wanted to make that a motion and to, um, approve the staff recommended, uh, fee, fee change.
Okay. One second. Thank you, Councilmember Kaiser. We have a first and a second to adopt the fee schedule for fiscal year 2122. Another roll call fee.
Councilmember Bertrand?
I approve.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story? Mayor Brooks?
Aye.
Okay, this item passes unanimously. We're going to move on to item 8G. This is to consider approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with Labor Groups and Adopt Salary Schedule Beginning June 27, 2021. I'll turn this over to staff.
Uh, Mayor Brooks, before I do the, the, um, uh, with the presentation, do you want to read the? Do you want me to put it on the screen, or you, you have it?
I've got it. Yes, I do want to read this. Okay, so before the city council this evening, as part of agenda item 8G, is a recommendation to approve salary and benefit packages for at-will management employees. At-will management employees consist of department heads and the city manager. Effective June 27, 2021, the cost of living increase for the city manager is 2.6%. Health benefits are increased by $50 per month. The department head cost of living increase is 2.6% and a market study salary increase of 1.7% is included for all department heads except the chief of police. The chief of police salary is increased by 8.257% to offset the removal of a 8.257% city-deferred compensation contribution. All department heads will receive a $1,500 one-time bonus consistent with the signing bonuses proposed for other groups who have agreed to new MOUs this evening. Health benefits are increased by $50 a month for all department heads. And now I will turn it over to staff for our brief presentation.
Thank you. Uh, let me share my screening. Okay, I hope you can see that. Um, so the city and employee groups, uh, have been negotiating, um, uh, close to four months. We've been doing this mainly, in fact, uh, almost exclusively via Zoom, um, with myself as well as the, uh, the city hired negotiator. Um, at this meeting, we are going to be, we have agreements with the confidential employees, the management or department head, and the city manager. Sorry, I need my. The major, I want to kind of go through the major provisions of the agreement, just so you know. Each bargaining group, uh, negotiated based on their own priorities, what they, what each group found was most important to their group. City council gave negotiating overall financial authority, as well as separate authority, to address the, any of the market kind of salary adjustments that came out of a salary study. So attached to the summary of the financial changes for each group, um, confidential employees, employees, um, received a 3% COLA in each of the three years of the three-year contract. Um, no increases to health. Um, the market study, um, salary adjustment, which, as we talked about, was for, based on a compensation study we did, is for all employees in the group except for the recreation division manager, who is a new person in this, in this group, and, um, that was adjusted as they, as they came in. In addition, um, all members of this, uh, group will receive a $1,500 one-time bonus, um, after ratification. And again, the creation of the recreation division manager classification was added to the confidential group. Department heads, as Mayor Brooks just read, uh, received this year a 2.6 COLA, and they've agreed to 2.75 COLAs in the next two years. Health increases of $50 a month and $25 a month. Um, the, the salary study, all, all, all classifications other than the chief of police will receive 1.7 to their salary range and a one-time bonus. The city manager receives a 2.6 COLA and a 2.75 each of the next two years, as well as health increases of $50 and $25 the next two years. Uh, in addition, the city management contract did not have a longevity provision. Um, it has been added at 15 years of continuous employment at the city of Capitola. So the recommended action is to authorize the city manager to execute successor agreements with the, with the groups, with the confidential bargaining group. The city council needs to approve changes to the management compensation plan, which is for all department heads, approve the changes to the city manager employee contract, and to adopt, uh, the resolution approving the new salary schedule. And at that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions, councilmembers? No. Okay, so now I'll open this up to public comments. If you'd like to make a comment- If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. For the speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you, and you will have up to three minutes to speak.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any of the attendees raising their hand on this item to speak. And I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll bring this back to council for further comments, deliberation, and a vote. Who would like to begin? Vice Mayor Story?
Mayor, I want to move that we adopt the staff recommended points one through four, um, concerning this item.
I second.
Have a first and a second. Any other comments? Okay, Chloe, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand?
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story?
Aye.
Mayor Brooks?
Aye. Okay, so this brings us now to item nine for adjournment. We are going to adjourn this evening for our regular meeting and move right on.